We could access that other property to mine the other property. I don't know. I think that's something, yeah. But water, you know how it seeps, so that would be my concern, that it seeped over there and then we would be able to. Or, or it would, you know, put water on our crushed gravel or whatever. There is some crushed gravel in there, down there now, that they needed to. That, yeah, that Dan wanted to know when, you know, when that's going. I, I have Bruce coming, so he can.
Mr. Burton, unless you want to chair this meeting, we better get going. Good, how are you?
God, it feels weird, Claire Cross.
You want to do it, or do you want me to do it?
I don't care.
Tell me, I don't care.
Go ahead. Uh, do you want me to, I'll, I'll make you.
Either way, I don't care.
Just want to let you guys know that we've gone into the next stage on the FEMA reimbursement.
So we're streaming.
Why don't you, George, why don't you just get up in public commenting, or, and talk about it?
You could even ask me to report on that.
Yeah, George, we'll just, yeah, I'll ask you to report on it.
Where is Mike?
Oh, what do you? George.
So.
In fact, maybe Mr. Wood, you might want to start.
Okay, I will.
And I've asked Chad to pray and Wendy to pledge.
Thank you.
Well, you guys are doing pro tem, I thought I'd just jump out there and do that.
Uh.
Chad, Wendy.
And Wendy to pray.
Other way around.
Oh.
Good morning, all. Um, we're here at, um, commission meeting and, uh, for Iron County on Monday, the twelfth day of February twenty twenty four. And we will get started with, um, Chad to give us a prayer, Chad Dotson, and, um, Wendy Jessen to lead us in the pledge. We'll go that far.
Our Father in heaven, we bow our heads before thee at this time and give thee thanks for a beautiful day. We're so grateful the opportunity to engage in the work that we do, and we feel blessed to, to serve the people of Iron County. We are grateful for the recent moisture that we've received and, and ask that thou would continue to bless us with, with snow back in our mountains. Please bless our leaders here locally and statewide and nationally, that, uh, they will be guided and make wise decisions that will benefit thy people. We are again so grateful for the place in which we live and the opportunity we have to serve. And we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to excuse, um, Commissioner Blake. Um, he's back at NACO, um, in Washington DC representing Iron County, so it's nice to have him back there. And, um.
I will.
Make a motion to appoint Commissioner Cousins to be chair for today.
Okay, I'll second that.
Moved in second, and?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Um, we'll start out this morning with the approval of our minutes. And looks like we have John, January twenty second.
Eighth and the twenty second.
Eighth and the twenty second, okay.
Uh, I'll move to approve the minutes for January eighth and twenty second, twenty twenty four.
I'll second that. Oh, uh, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you.
And I will move for approval of claims for payment from January twenty second, twenty twenty four, to February eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Second, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move to our depart- departmental reports, um, and start with our attorney, Mr. Dotson.
Thank you, good morning. I just have a few renounce for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just wanted to recap twenty twenty three. Since the last time we met, um, we were consistently about twenty percent, um, up on our case filings, or the cases referred to to be screened for prosecution, and that held, uh, towards the end of the year. We ended up with sixteen hundred and fifty six cases referred for prosecution. And that was twenty one percent up from last year, thirteen percent up from twenty twenty one. So we've, we ebb and flow, but we've been consistently up, um, thirteen and now twenty one percent the last couple of years. Year was busy. We had five jury trials, several bench trials, resolved some homicide cases. Uh, one of those went to jury trial. Several child and adult sexual assault cases, um, resolved successfully. So that was, uh, a good thing. Moving the backlog back, I think we're pretty much caught up, um, on our, uh, COVID backlog. There are a few outliers, older cases. Um, but for the most part, I think we've made good progress. Uh, met with the court last week, and they're, they're also happy with some of the progress we've made compared to other jurisdictions. Couple of recent case highlights, wanted to put on there and highlight some of the good work being done. Um, Robert Garcia, he was convicted and sentenced to three to life on an attempted rape that occurred in twenty twenty one at the landslide festival in Iron County. Uh, that was a, an event that was, took place out there, um, western Iron County. Steven Charles Bags was another case. I don't know if, if you guys remember this. This was a college professor at SUU that was making all kinds of threats to the students, professors, and then it bled over into, um, our office, law enforcement, and even the court. Pretty vile threats that he was making on a long period of time, and, uh, so domestic violence in his, his personal relationships. And so that was, uh, a case that we ended up having to extradite him. He fled to Japan and, uh, ultimately he came back and he was convicted and sentenced and, um, no longer a threat for the time being.
Did you have to go over and get him?
He ended up, we were making some arrangements. I think he saw the writing on the wall. He voluntarily came back and we ended up getting him in, um, Washington. He was apprehended at the airport, so, um, the warrant snagged him up there. And then finally, uh, I think I had mentioned this in some of our prior, um, reports, but we had those, uh, drive-by shootings that took place March of last year. Several were juveniles, some adults. Those are all resolved, uh, convictions in all the cases. And, um, uh, the, the adults were sentenced to prison, which I think was appropriate, just given the egregiousness of the conduct. We don't see that here in Iron County, so we wanted to try and make a statement that that's, you know, we don't want to see that as a routine occurrence where it isn't unfortunately up north and other places. Um, but yeah. We came in under budget. Our, our budget's pretty simple and easy to do, so that's, that's been, uh, something that we have routinely done, and I'm happy about that. Staffing's good, we're still fully staffed. Uh, we may have some changes this year. We're anticipating, um, one of our attorneys is, um, planning on moving back up north. So we'll, uh, anticipate that, but, uh, other than that, we've been pretty consistent with our staffing. Any questions or concerns?
No, just one note.
Keep up the good work.
Well, thanks, well.
One noteworthy, I was, um, on the call this morning, the HB one, uh, one fifty eight that Rex is running, the criminal defamation.
Yeah.
And that passed out of, uh, the Senate Committee unanimously this morning, so it looks like that's looking pretty good.
I think so. We, we did discuss that, um, prior to him introducing that, and, um, I let him know my thoughts. I thought, I don't, historically, that is not a, a charge that is, is used in the criminal context. It's usually a civil. And, uh, I think the feedback he was getting was that there was going to be no real pushback, so I think it should probably be successful.
That'll be good.
Okay. Thank you for your report, appreciate it. Uh, CJC, Wendy. Who are you sitting by back there, Wendy?
Morning, um, got some.
Good morning.
Okay, we'll just start you off with a, with our recap of last year. Um, we had two hundred and thirty-four new cases that were opened. Um, two hundred and twenty-seven of those involved a forensic interview. And, um, you can see the breakdown, a hundred and forty-five of those were sexual, sexual abuse, sixty-two physical abuse, um, twenty cases of domestic and or family violence, um, thirty-six drug endangerment. I think I skipped seventeen neglect, nine child pornography, and two sex trafficking. Um, it is important to note that, obviously, those numbers don't add up to two hundred and twenty-seven. Um, so sometimes families come in and children will have more than one victimization. So that's pretty common. Um, the age groups, um, thirty-two of those kids that we saw were aged zero, zero to six. Eighty-four were aged seven to twelve, a hundred and eight were thirteen to eighteen, and then we had ten survivors who were aged eight, nineteen or older. As far as the offender demographics go, we had two hundred and seventy-two offenders on these cases. Thirty of them were under age thirteen, sixty-nine of them were aged thirteen to eighteen, a hundred and fifty-eight were aged nineteen or older. Um, fifteen unknown or not reported. Um, of those, ninety-four of them were parent or stepparent. Twenty-seven were a sibling, five of them were a parent's boy or girlfriend, twenty-eight another relative, ninety-four another known person, six internet-only acquaintances, and then nine, we didn't have enough information on. Um, as you can see from that, uh, abuse is usually by people that the child knows. It's not, you know, we're always taught stranger danger in school, but that's not actually the case. Which is really unfortunate, however you look at it. The second paper I have there for you with the statistics shows just year to year. I put a little bar graph in there or line graph in there, so you guys could see just how those cases go. It's kind of up and down. We had one more last year than the year prior. Um, so far this year, we are up to twenty-three, uh, with fourteen in January and nine so far in February and one medical exam. If you flip that over, we have our contracted therapy. Um, so in twenty twenty-three, we had a total of fifty clients who, the total was a hundred and twenty sessions that we did, um, that's starting in July. And that's with our new grant and new, um, parameters that we've put into place. And then so far in twenty twenty-four, five clients have had twelve sessions. That's just for January. Questions so far on that? Okay. Um, our budget, so as of quarter two for our fiscal year twenty-four, we've only used thirty-two point eight percent of our state budget, which does not include the two hundred and fifty thousand extra that we have to go toward our building. Um, so we're in really good shape there. We do plan on probably purchasing a lot of office furniture for our new center. So we'll, we'll be in good shape there. Um, VOKA, looking good with personnel and benefits. And we've only used twenty-three point four two percent of the therapy funds so far, and that was, if you probably don't recall, but fifty-five thousand is what we started with, um, just based on data that we had for clients who come through the CJC and how many sessions they have. I tried to give us a little space just to make sure we weren't short on that, but that's where we are so far. Um, some accomplishments we're feeling good about. Um, Hayden, she started in July. Uh, she's our, one of our victim advocates, and she's feeling a lot more confident in her job and really liked this conference we went to in San Diego recently. And then Adeline, who is our new full-time forensic interviewer. Um, she is working on updating our MDT prot- protocol, and she's really excited to be here in Iron County. Another super great advantage of having her here means that we can do the forensic interview training in southern Utah, so we have one of those, um, coming up. She and another forensic interviewer in Washington County CJC can co-teach that, and that makes it easier, because otherwise our detectives and, uh, Child Protective Service investigators have to go to Salt Lake for that training, and it's a good few days where they're out of town. Um, so that's really great that we have that going on. Um, we did, like, as I said before, we went to a conference in San Diego. It's a child and family maltreatment conference, and so we really enjoyed those trainings and networking with others in our field. They had people there from twenty-six different countries. So it's a huge international conference. Um, and, you know, we spent good time together as a team. Some of the topics that we were, we learned about were extortion, uh, child abuse homicide. They had a case study. It was pretty horrific. Um, leading teams through change, victim advocacy, forensic interviewing, um, and some on the new NCA standards, the National Children's Alliance. And then just lastly, our new building, uh, the facility's coming along. We've been working carefully with deciding what we need for the interior, such as furniture and decor, where we're trying to create that comfortable, functional atmosphere for clients and our, uh, partners that come to the CJC. So that's it. Any questions or?
No, that's exciting, exciting to get going.
We're super excited about that.
Have they started putting up any of the walls and that type of thing? It was all the foundation that I had seen.
Yeah, that was going on, and then I know that they were putting in the, uh, sewer lines and things like that, and then they were suppo- supposed to start framing. I need to drive out there and go see, see how that's coming along, but should be good. Um.
Will you, how soon will you put your other property on the market?
Um, as far as I know, we want to make sure we're.
Moved into the other.
So we have a good timeline and getting out of there. That way, you know, we're protecting the confidentiality of clients, and we can't really have somebody walking in their after hours without one of us present, so.
That makes it.
It's kind of tricky.
Challenging.
Yeah, where we've got, you know, sensitive information, um, we want to protect that, so.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Uh, Justice Court, Wendy.
Morning.
Lori, how you doing? Good.
Thank you. It should be pretty routine, not an awful lot, uh, to report. We, from a staffing standpoint, are holding steady. We did just, uh, lose and replace one of our judicial assistant ones, and we've, got a, what we perceive, hopefully, you know, a neat young lady that's, uh, joining us. She, uh, had worked for DCFS and, um, started with us last Monday. So thank you for that approval. We, I've got first attached there, our budget. We came in slightly under budget, which was, uh, a good thing considering that you'd, uh, our interpreter expenses had gone up considerably over the last year, so it may, over budget in that line item, under budget overall. And then, um, also, as you know, the, um, the legislation regarding, uh, the judge's salary, which impacted our, our budget too, so still under, under budget. Also, I just want to take a moment and thank Julie for being here. She's our senior judicial assistant, and we're doing some cross-training, so maybe next time Julie will be the one presenting.
Good.
Uh, we just want to make sure that, uh, if anything ever happens to one of us, that someone else can, can come in and cover, and Julie does a great job with the court, and I appreciate her immensely. Next, I just want to go to that, uh, recap. So this is by charges, not by cases, the, the report that I present to you every, uh, quarter. And by the way, that budget was till the end of the year, so that was all, that was two thousand twenty-three, bless you. Basically, up in almost every category with the exception of, uh, controlled substances. They were down, um, somewhat considerably. I don't, I don't know what we could attribute that to. Maybe it's the medical marijuana piece, and they're not citing it as much. DUIs were up and, I mean, basically everything, and unfortunately, the domestic violence piece was up. I, I would perceive somewhat significantly. So caseload was slightly up over the year before. And then in terms of the revenue piece, we were, um, collected about fifty-six thousand more than we did the year prior, dispersed a little less back to the state, and that, um, meant a, a net retention of about sixty thousand to this, to the state, I mean, to the, to, to the county. And I just wanted to, to show you, you know how I always present the, uh, citation piece by LEA and what they're writing, and that's there through the end of the year? And then I did come to find this report in Chorus that is a filing summary report that, uh, shows the total number of cases, and again, that's where we get that figure where we're only slightly, um, oh, about eight hundred and seventy cases more than the year before, um, filed. So I'll start probably presenting that as well. And that's all I have. I mean, we're, we're running smoothly. Everything's pretty routine.
Just curious, when you put out that new position, how, did you have a lot of applicants?
We had a lot of applicants and.
Seems like the tide is shifting on finding people.
It is, it is, and, and I'm going to reserve a conversation with all, you know, not with everybody, but with you, Paul, to start with in, uh, in a few months. I, 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 I first want to thank you for, you know, the, the increase, um, you know, the, the, the cola. The cola and, you know, as well as, as the other. I mean, that was, that was helpful. You know, there, there is a, a trend. I, I am preparing a study because there, there is a trend where justice courts in like-sized counties, you know, anywhere from two dollars to four dollars more per hour. But, you know, and, and, and I hope I'm not out of line to just mention that, but I don't ever want to broadside you on anything. I would like you to just see those, those figures and, and, uh, talk this year, you know, about, uh, about whether, how, how we could possibly address that. But anything else?
No, good work.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's see, uh, Jaden, victim advocate.
Good morning. Um, so last quarter, uh, total, we served a hundred and eighty-eight clients. That's up from a hundred and fifty-one last quarter. Typically, the holidays are known for that. There's a lot of things that happen during the holidays and usually some substances that are involved that contribute to a lot of the issues that we see, but, um, so that was up. Um, total for last year, we served a total of six hundred and thirty-three clients. A lot of those overlap with CJC, obviously. Um, just because we're involved in that initial part of the investigation, and then they go to the CJC to receive that forensic interview in a, a safe and comfortable place. Um, the primary victimizations that we saw this last quarter is usually always domestic violence. We had a total of seventy-three clients, and as Lori mentioned, that was significantly higher this last quarter. Um, last quarter, we had forty clients that were domestic violence victims, so, um, thirty-three clients increase, so that was a, a pretty big jump. Um, assaults, we saw decreased a little bit. Child physical abuse stayed about the same. We had about nineteen clients. Child sexual abuse, however, increased significantly. Last quarter, we had thirteen. Or the previous quarter, we had thirteen. This last quarter, October through December, we had thirty-one, um, that were victims of child abuse or child sexual abuse. Um, and a lot of that's not always the primary victim. Sometimes that's secondary, whether that's a parent. We, we classify them as, as a secondary victim in our tracking system, just because they are, they're picking up the pieces for the primary victim, so. Um, some of that contributes to that as a higher number as well, but, um, January will probably likely be more. As you guys know, I, I've been talking about our CAP certification. It stands for Certified Advocate Partners Program. That's what allows us to provide legal advice to clients as it pertains to the protective order. Um, so we can help them file the protective order. We can help them through the court hearings. Um, whereas before, we could pretty much just show them, here's what's available, good luck, um, and support them as much as we could, but we couldn't tell them what or how to do anything. And so now that's in place, I'm able to provide that legal advice along with Haley McEl.
That was a training that you went to?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think I started end of summer, probably July or August. And I, I got my cert- legal certification in October, November, and so I've been doing that for the last couple of months, but, um, just in January, that week following Christmas in between New Year's, there was probably four or five just child protective orders that I filed, which is significantly abnormal. So, um, that was a huge change that we saw, unfortunately. But it's also a, a huge relief to be able to provide the protective order services to clients as well, so. Um, we also saw an increase in adult sexual assault, which is unfortunate as well. We had twenty-three clients that reported that, whereas usually it's probably in the teens, maybe, low teens. Um, we've also just kind of some things that have been going on in our program besides statistics. Um, besides the CAP certification, I work closely, like I said, with Haley McElprang at Canyon Creek. She's the victim services director there. And we present around the state, whether it be for those protective order, just educating people on protective orders, or the relationship between system-based advocates that are in law enforcement and county attorney's office. Um, or whether they're community-based and working for shelters, things like that. Iron County is known throughout the state to have a good working relationship between the community-based side and the law enforcement side. So that's something we're extremely proud of and are, have been asked several times to go around the state, um, in different areas and present on our relationship, um, and how we make things work. And so we've, we've had several opportunities to do that. Just a couple snapshots from our year. Um, we've had lots of high-profile cases. I'm, don't love that Iron County's on the news constantly now, but, um, so a lot of those have caught the news. But we've been able to work through those as best as we can. Let's see. We've obviously added, um, state funds as a revenue source this last year, starting in July, so we're not only relying on VOKA, and that has been a significant help. Um, we've been talking with Chief Adams at Cedar City Police. Um, I think they are looking at preferring to have somebody that's in-house that they're paying for. They contribute a lot to Taylor's salary. But potentially, once our grant cycle ends with VOKA, they may look at, um, separating from the county and providing their own program. So that's something that's being talked about. It wouldn't be for a couple of years, though, until our grant, uh, recycles. As far as everything else, we're just super thankful for the resort, the, the support that we do receive from the county, as well as just all of our other partners, whether it be the state partners, local city. Um, we're able to, to take care of things financially for our clients as well as us. Um, we've got vehicles that are extremely helpful to our clients. We've got access to several different departments, you know, departments that don't even see us. I've, I've got access to SU police. I can go in there anytime that I need to to access the victim services room. And then they're, they're just a, a huge value that officers and detectives see to have victim advocates in place, and they tell us that all the time. And then obviously, besides serving crime victims, we have some of that funding set aside for compassion services. We use that for things like suicides, fatal accidents. Um, we did go to a structural fire this last quarter as well. We used a total of fourteen point twenty-five hours, um, on those cases this last year, and so those have been extremely helpful as well. Other than that, that's all I've got. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Nope.
Nope, thank you for all your work.
Appreciate it. George, if you want to report on what you were talking to us, sorry to interrupt.
You want me to cover the, uh, the, the, uh, grant or do you want me to cover?
Just whatever you think we need to know about.
Okay. So, um, agenda item one is the, um, the grant for that. Um, I would highly recommend that, that the county approve that. Um, this is only a study. And so we're not making any decisions, but it's-
For a fire district.
Yeah, for the fire district, yeah. And, uh, that's, uh, I would highly recommend that we go ahead and approve that going forward. It's something that we need. We need to at least have a start to that. You know, obviously, the study hadn't been done. We're not making any decisions yet, but it's going to help us, um, going forward to, uh, to make those decisions about, uh, fire districts in the county. So I would highly recommend that. On the other matter, uh, the federal reimbursement, the FEMA reimbursement, um, we've obviously been approved. And, uh, I have gotten information from, uh, John and Jennifer and the road department. Uh, I put that all together. It's in the FEMA system. I've been, uh, talking to the, we've got a case officer assigned to us. They will probably be down here, FEMA with a team on the 15th, um, be sitting down with me and going over all of our damages and our reports. They'll be probably asking for more stuff. So I'll be, I'll be reaching out to everybody involved, uh, for information. And then we'll probably be doing some onsite inspections too. And I've already informed Bruce that I probably need his help. I can go to this, I can take them to the sites, but as far as technical, when he starts talking about, you know, grading and stuff like that, I'm not, I-
Bruce's expertise-
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not qualified to do that.
So could you clarify what exactly you applied for?
Oh, uh, we, from the 23, uh, the 2023 runoff floods, uh, all the road damage out, uh, around Modena and, and Burl and, and-
Gold Springs.
Gold Springs.
Yeah, and all those areas out there. Um, we're seeking reimbursement for that. It's approximately, it's somewhere around, uh, and, and, uh, we also learned that we can now apply some of that to recreational stuff. So I've gotten with Mike Werthen, and he's provided me with information from BLM and from his side. So we're going to roll that in for some of his trails and things like that. So it's probably right around, uh, right now, about $400,000 that we're looking for reimbursement from, uh, from FEMA for. So it's moving forward, um, and FEMA is moving forward. And we, we're pretty much in contact every few days. So.
Great.
Great.
Okay. Thanks, George. Appreciate it.
Thanks, George.
Let's see, Paul Monroe, sorry, I skipped you.
While you're wa- while you're walking up, that, it was good to see you on a horse.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. It's good to get back on the saddle for sure. Uh, Paul Monroe with, uh, Central Iron County Water Conservancy District. Um, thanks for having me and having me on a good time of year. We were, as of, um, a couple of days ago, we were at 150% of Webster Flat. So.
Wow.
Wow.
That's a big shift, a big change, you know?
We weren't.
Last year, we were 200% at this time.
That's remarkable.
And even a little bit higher than 200%.
But that's just, that's just been in the last few weeks.
Right. Yeah, we were below, yeah, we were below 50% at the first of the year. We've started getting a couple of, uh, storms after the first of the year. And then this atmospheric river that's come through has really piped in a lot of water. So, uh, yeah, we're going to have to start thinking, um, about places to put the water too, is it, depending on how it comes off. Because I know that Quichapah's already got some significant water in it pulling over from last year. So I think Paul will probably have to start having some discussions on how we're going to manage that this spring. So.
He'll be up at three o'clock in the morning again.
I was going to ask you about the Schmidt pit stuff. Will Tracy have that ready in time to?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we anticipate we'll have that ready for the Schmidt pit. People will start taking water there fairly soon too. And we'll obviously be able to take a lot more water there as well. So.
He said he's going from like 25 to 75 CFS into that?
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, it'll be great.
Wow.
Well, we probably can't handle 75, but I'll bet we could handle 40.
Yeah, yeah, at least double. So.
Last year it was, we could have done a lot more.
At least we'll have the capacity to do it. Um, and then we'll manage it from there. A couple of things, uh, that I, that I'd like to share with you and make sure you're aware of initially is, uh, the Utah Water Users Conference coming up. That's March 19th and 20th. If you can only make it one day, I would recommend Tuesday, the 19th. That's a full day.
March 19th and 20th? And you'd recommend what day?
The 19th. That's a Tuesday. Uh, Fifth Grade Water Fair, we host every year. All the, the fifth graders in the county come through the festival hall. And we educate them on water, water issues, watershed.
It, it's all at Festival Hall?
Yep, it's all Festival Hall. It's over two days, March 5th and 6th. And I can't remember how many years. Let's see, uh, I think I s- started doing that about two years after I was there. So it's probably our ninth year, minus one or two with COVID. And then we also have a, first time, we'll be hosting a water efficient landscape workshop. That'll be hosted by, uh, Jessica Shibley, or Jessica Staley and Candace Shibley from Water Resources. That'll be, uh, at the DNR building, March 14th and 15th for the public. So just a couple of items there we have coming up. And, uh, update now on, on the district. You know, financially, we closed out the year in a good position, and, and I'll say good. And then you may raise some eyebrows when I start saying some numbers, but, uh, we ended the year, uh, in the negative, a little over a million dollars. And now I'll explain that. So what we have is, we just received some project money. And we're starting to work through the, that, those large projects. So we received a, uh, $19 million loan with $4 million grant. And the terms on that were 40 years at 1.25%. So we were really excited about that. And, and as we've progressed through that, you know, with plans and putting everything together, a lot of infrastructure is involved with that. Um, new tanks, um, wells and pipeline to interconnect some of our systems. So there's, there's quite a bit that's involved in that. And we also refinanced, um, about $4 million of some of our loans and brought that down to that, that lower rate. But as we were doing that, uh, we had, we had to get a construction loan in the midterm, and we did that with, through Utah Bank. And they allowed us to, you know, whatever money was left in the bank with this construction loan, they'd allow that to stay in there. And they would pay us the interest at the PTF rate, which is, you know, a little over 5% right now. And so we were making $50,000 a month on the money that's sitting in there. And so rather than draw that money out in some of these projects we've been doing, we were just using our on-hand cash that we have. So that's why within this budget year, it looks like we spent a million dollars. That will be, that will come back through with not that construction loan money. That'll come through, through that USDA money. And we can start drawing on that here in the next couple of months when, you know, there's a certain percentage of your project that needs to be finalized and up and going before they'll start those loan payments. We'll start coming, or those funds from that loan will start coming in. So our board elected to, um, just to pay with that, with some of the existing cash that we have versus, you know, taking money. Because the, the, the interest on that loan, that $12 million construction loan, you know, we're making more money on the interest that we're getting back than what we would have on the monthly payment. So it was actually a, a smart financial decision, even though, you know, this next year, when our audit comes out, it'll look, you know, some people may rise some, you know, raise some eyebrows at it. But in the long run, it'll be a better, uh, financial situation for the district. So within that project, uh, we have, um, a couple of large pipeline projects that we're doing. We have got out towards the dump, we're going to put in a large storage concrete tank. It'll be buried tank. Uh, 4 million gallons is what it's designed for. And, uh, there'll be a 24-inch line that will connect the existing 24-inch line on Iron Springs Road that will, will wrap up around to that new tank.
Is that, is that south of the landfill? Or where is that?
So that, it's just, the, the tie-in will happen right at the Sunrise, pretty close to the Sunrise Church.
And then where the, will the tank be?
And then the tank will wrap around, do you know where our booster pump station is, um, that goes towards the mine off of Desert Round Road?
Right up there.
It'll be, yeah, back up in the trees, up towards, up in the hills there a little bit.
On Frank's property.
On, on some of Frank Nichols' property. Yep. So he's been good to deal with. Uh, we, we were able to exchange, um, he got a connection out there where his facility is with our new line, that went out Iron Springs Road. He exchanged property for some of those things. So he's been a good partner in that way. So that'd be one. With the other water line, we're connecting to, to kind of regionalize the whole lower valley of Cedar Valley. Um, is a water line on 4,000 North and Lund Highway. So it'll go west. And, and that will make it so that we all have, our, our, that new tank will be a balancing tank. And everything kind of in the valley will be on one pressure zone. We'll have some higher pressure zones. You know, kind of cross hollow hills and things like that, regulated by PRVs. But it'll be a really big, a good benefit for, uh, water storage and water availability throughout the whole valley.
Paul, any more thoughts of tying in with Cedar City and?
Uh, yeah, so that's the other thing I was going to update here.
Before you move on, so that's 4,000 North and Mid Valley or in Lund?
Lund. Yeah. So that's, yeah, that's where the tie-in is. And then it goes west to 4,400 West. Yeah.
And that's not a tank. That's, that's just looping the system?
Yeah, yep. That'll loop the system. Right now, there's a high-pressure line there. That'll eliminate that so that it'll be on a low pressure so that, you know, additional development can happen there. Otherwise, developers would have to put in a large pressure-reducing valve. Uh, and then one other water line that we're looping a system is on 6,000 North. That's between 2,300 and 1,700 West.
Oh, yeah.
And 6,000 North. So out towards the wastewater treatment plant, we've got two parallel lines that dead end. So we just want to loop those so those don't get stagnant. Um, and then another tank that we have, Jonathan, is, is Cedar Highlands. They'll be getting a new concrete tank as well. And then we're in the process too of, of, uh, putting together, putting, drilling a well out in Basin 71. And this kind of gets back to your comments, uh, you know, Cedar City has recently purchased water rights in Basin 71, which is the Escalante Valley. And, and that boundary line is pretty close to Bowman's Restaurant, right in there. So the Basin 73, Cedar Valley is on the east, and then west of that, west of Bowman's, anything west of there is that Basin 71 or the Escalante Valley. So we're going to, uh, drill a well there. We have water rights there. And now Cedar City does as well. And we've been in conversations quite a bit with Cedar City on those interconnections.
So they'll tie, they'll use our lines to-
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, there, we've had a lot of different discussions of how things might happen. I'm, I'm not exactly sure, but, you know, the district is, is open and offered lots of opportunities. The district just purchased property at the Y, which is, uh, a really good location to interconnect the city and the district. So we purchased 20 acres. Um, that'll be, uh, for this interconnection of this project as well as in the future too. Because that's where our water line will come in from Basin 14, Pine Valley. So, you know, there may be larger tanks and storage, booster pumps, lots of other infrastructure that may go there in the future. And so, um, that is, uh, one thing that we, we closed on that property in December. And, uh, we're excited about that and those opportunities. But, you know, one thing that would really benefit Cedar, if they choose to do so, would be to interconnect their wells that are out in Quichapah into our line and that tank, that new tank that's there, and then just boost from that. Cause that will really reduce a lot of head pressure on those wells. Right now, those water lines are about 300 PSI.
Crazy.
Tremendous pressure. And if you've ever seen a leak that happens that's out there, I mean, it can be geysers shooting like Old Faithful.
Yeah.
You get somebody, a manhole working on that and it, something happens, it's dangerous.
Yeah. And, and so this would alleviate two things. It'd alleviate a lot of pressure potentially, um, that they have. And more importantly, in my mind, from just a, a, a maintenance standpoint, is they're pumping those wells with no booster pump in between. So all of the head pressure, all of the pressure that's on that line is on the well. And so you have to add additional bowls or pumps basically within your well. So when one of those goes down, you know, you've got to replace a tremendous amount of infrastructure. It's not really necessary. You know, you can have a booster pump over on top of the ground and do that. And so this would allow them to, to potentially do that as, as we move forward. We have a, a CIB application in to where, you know, we'll see how those go. It's, it's never fun to sit in front of a CIB board. I noticed you guys have this on here. They're usually okay with steady money, but when they, uh, they grill you for not being a contributing county every time and make you feel bad, but.
So Paul, um, initially, they were going to develop that well up by Green Springs Road. But it didn't pan out. Um, and that would have equalized by, by filling that tank. And it would have equalized lower the pressure in the whole valley. But that didn't, that well didn't pan out. The, the wells they're talking about drilling up to Miltz by Miltz, will that do the same kind of thing? To provide water from there to some of those higher tanks and lower the pressure as well? Or?
Yeah, it'll just be interesting to see. I mean, I, I don't know exactly all of demands of Cedar City, but they've grown a lot too. And, you know, I, I don't see that we can get to right off the bat, that we'll be shutting off the switch out of Quichapah. And I know that that's, I know that that's, you know, a, a big goal of Cedar City is to do that, but it's going to take a while. I mean, they're drilling one well and they haven't, they've drilled multiple wells and they haven't got any water yet.
Is the one at Martin's Flat panning out or not? It's kind of an artisan type.
I've heard mixed reports, so I'm not sure what, I know that there's no plans to, to pipe it in yet, but that, those could have changed. So, yeah.
Where was, where's the Martin's Flat one?
Up the canyon.
Up Cedar Canyon.
That one, is that the one off the road you can see?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. And they're currently drilling another one, um, just below Miltz. So the Martin's Flat is above Miltz, and this one is, is just down below.
I think they talked about drilling nine or 10 right in there. If that one pans out, they want to drill more to capture that water.
And, and you know, to me, that one makes a lot of sense. If, if they're, if the water quality and everything comes back is good, then, then that makes a lot of sense to be able to, to operate, uh, that, that way. So.
Paul, is there any move, oh, go ahead, Marilyn.
Is that, um, below where they're drilling now? Is that below where right hand comes in?
Yeah, I think it's just below where right hand comes in.
And that probably is a really good spot, I'll bet.
Cedar owns a lot of property right there. Maybe they're going to use their own property to drill on.
Yeah, I think that's what they're doing.
So Paul, is there any movement on, you know, and this has been floated around. Is there any movement eventually on having the water district kind of be the purveyor of water and have the municipalities purchase water, you know, kind of at cost? Plus O and M. I mean, is there, is there any talk, maintain their own systems that then there's, but, but do kind of, have you guys be the purveyors?
I think there's conversations, but there's still, you know, there's still a lot of, um, it's, it's like with any, you know, almost like your own business, right? You've put a lot of these entities have put a lot, right? Yeah, right, exactly. I, you know, i- in my mind, I have to continually remind the other municipalities that, uh, you know, of, we live in the same community and, and water is regional. It's not, um, isolated to any boundaries. You know, you, you see that even within Cedar City. They're not just drilling wells in city limits, right? And then they've had a longstanding obligation and, and understanding that they needed to go other places to get water. It wasn't, uh, or it was a long time ago. I mean, it was, I, I think 19, around 1910 is when they started piping in water from up the canyon. And then you see when they did it out towards Shirts Canyon, that's, that's not a short pipeline. I mean, it's like seven to 10 miles that they ran a pipeline out there. And then Quichapah Creek, they piped that in in the 50s. And so there's always been these, these reaches that have gone out and, um, and water is regional. It's not just a, a localized thing and, and we're all in this together. So I think that it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a forward-thinking thought. It's something that needs to happen. And, and something that I think we're just here at the table, um, just trying to present and, and showcase how economies of scale, you know, we can do this together and we're together. And, and maybe there's some hybrid ways of how that happens. And we're, we're working through some of that right now. So. One other thing I just wanted to mention, well, maybe two other things, unless you guys want me to get off of here.
You're good.
Watershed councils, um, you know, initial watershed councils, we weren't really sure what their purpose was. But the current legislation that, that is being passed and things looking at it that way. I think we need to make sure that we're all aware and involved in these watershed councils. They are, uh, we're involved with the Cedar Beaver Watershed. And so we need to make sure that we have good representation on that because, uh, some of the legislations being passed or looked at this session is ranking projects within the state, and those are getting recommendations from watershed councils. So we're initially- So we're initially, we thought that this was just maybe a meeting to have a meeting type group. They're they're putting things behind it now where where we may need to be involved, but there's a Cedar Beaver Watershed Council. We're also involved in the uh. West Desert Watershed Council with our water rights that we own out in Basin fourteen and sixty nine. So that was just that little bit there. And then um. I just kind of highlighted briefly legislature. I will just say that the the water bill of the year, there always seems to be one, but it's House Bill two eighty. Um, there have been some significant changes to that. We've been working with Representative Ship. He was able to get an amendment in. In that bill to have representation from uh, our rural districts, rural areas. Um, it was kind of tied up into just, you know, the big four water conservancy districts. And we wanted to make sure that there were some rural voices on there and. And uh, Representative Snyder did include that in that and and that did pass out of committee favorably last week, so.
You're feeling better about that?
Feel better about it. It is just a study bill now. That's all it is, is a study.
So that was, wasn't that part of Sandals SB two oh three? And they then they kind of split those up. See that those were maybe together at one time, then they split them?
Yeah, possibly so. And 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 I don't know, that actually I. Sandals might be a little bit different and I'm, it'll be interesting to see how that one shakes out. Cause I did after diving into a little bit more, that one is. More involved in just drinking water. Um, so um. Just getting money for drinking water and I don't know that there's a lot of appetite for it right now. Um, a lot of concern about whether or not this is a legal tax or if it's a fee. And both sides of that, whether it's, whether or not that's legal to do that, so. And we're tracking a whole bunch of other bills, so there's a list of them this year.
Lots of water bills.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Good work. I I uh, I just was over there looking at that project Tracy's working on at the Schmidt pit. Just, that's going to be nice.
Yeah, it would be nice. It'll be fun. So we're we're excited for the water and we just. Hope we continue and have places to put it, so.
Okay.
The uh, just I, well, one other thing too, I um. At a Quichapah, you know, we diked off that north end. Last year we were able to put. It was close to a thousand acre feet through that up into that, those center pivots up there. Um, and that is.
That's a lot, wow.
And and it's already full again. So this this winter runoff we've got on that north side. So that's why. You know, we we pumped it, pumped it all year long. There was a little bit left over and now that north side's already full again. And so. We'll probably start pumping as soon as, you know, putting it into our recharge areas up there. Um, probably middle of March, March fifteenth, fifteenth, when we know things aren't going to freeze.
Is our recharge pit up there empty right now?
Oh, it's empty, yeah. Yeah, we haven't pumped anything since probably middle of November when things got too cold.
And our, our ditch going north over to Frank's property, that's, that didn't really pan out like we hoped, did it?
No, it didn't. But there's some other areas too. Maybe we ought to look at that and and. You know, we, you and I drove up and saw some basins further to the west. Maybe we just need to start putting in some pipe here in the next month and start letting it rip, so.
Be great. Let's do it.
Okay, thanks everybody.
Appreciate it. All right, did we get everybody? I think so. Other than Marilyn, you want to go first?
Yeah, um. On January twenty third, the Iron County Sheriff's Department had their annual awards. Um, usually they had it had it before Christmas, but they um, had an issue with it and it set it back. Actually, I think it's a better time of year to have that awards ceremony, not too much going on in January and. And they had a good um, crowd that that came. They um, it's, I think it's very important that we recognize. Our deputies and the good work that they do. And uh, I love to see that. On the twenty fifth, um, we had um, a ribbon cutting about the new uh, gel. Ignite uh, program that that the jail's picking up to um, start training some of the people in the. Some of our inmates to help with with um. That program's really a successful program back east and we're the first ones to pick it up in Utah and we're excited to to start with that. And that'll be a great addition, especially when we get more programming um, area in our new jail facility when we get it. Um. On the third of February, um, at the historic Cedar Hotel, there where Jolly's used to be. Um, Maria Twitchell and her staff put together a really fun uh. Celebrating movies in uh, Southern Utah. So the first movie made in Utah, it was called The Deadwood Coach. It was the first. Uh, film in Utah. It was a silent movie with Tom Mix. And um, the Utah Film Commission came down. It was a fun event. They um. They had some of the college students uh, do some short film films and they had a little competition and they won a little bit of money and. And it was, it was a great event. I just wanted to tell, uh, shout out to Maria because she did such a great job, her and her, her staff. Um. On the sixth, I um, every once in a while, I get these calls all the time about the roads. And so every once in a while, I have Bruce take me on a little tour. Around the county to actually put my eyes on the issues that we're having. And so. It's so beneficial. I mean, we've, we've done this ever since I started and. It it just, it's so great to be able to get your eyes on it to see what the problems we're having. We had a um. Some water drainage over uh, just off the Butcorn Flat. That uh, ran down the road and and there's a uh, trash bin there. And and it was puddling there, so it was hard to get in. And we're, we're going to um. Bruce's guys are going to get in there and and get that fixed up for those folks. Uh, some of the roads, um. We also came over, um, we flagged the new fair barn that we're, that we're going to. Build um, with tourism money. Um, we're hoping to get going on it as soon as we can, but um. That's an exciting thing that that's going on in in Parowan. So um, also um, Jamie Evans, the fair director and I. Met with Ron Cooper. Um, he's the outdoor rec. Uh, he'll be the new. Uh, trail supervisor over here in Parowan. We'll house him. He'll have an office here in the courthouse and then he'll have a. A um. Stories equipment over to the fairgrounds. And um, that'll be a great thing for Southern Utah to have these trail crews and what what their job will be is just to clean trails and. Make new trails or or whatever that way. And uh, I think that's going to be very beneficial for our area to to have that in our. Um. Then the, the only other thing I had was um, how are, how are um. HB one thirteen's going up at the, up at this uh, legislature. And I think I'll let Paul talk about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so I just had a few things report on, we had a, uh, the Iron County Republican Party. Uh, sponsored a Lincoln Day event at the Crystal Inn over the weekend. It was a great success. Had a lot of the candidates uh, throughout the state and locally that were running for office and. It was packed. It was probably need a bigger building next year. It was really busy.
Really good.
I was very, very pleased.
Very successful.
Um, I attended a government affairs uh, for the home building associ- home builder association and uh. That's always a good meeting to collaborate with realtors and and the bankers and and school board members and different entities. We have that uh, that. Uh, that committee meeting about quarterly. We might start holding it more uh, more monthly and. Just to watch different things, see how that goes. Um. Commissioner Blake and I attended the uh, Stephen Lisbon B and S U, uh, they host uh, Iron Leaders Academy where they take people in. Iron County that want to learn more about the process and get it more involved. We were able to go out and 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 spend some time with those. Uh, folks in that program and talk about different, different things. That was enjoyable and and I thought it was very productive. Um. I'd like to thank our, our sign department in the county. They donated a few signs for the, we're going to. Uh, change the name of the site, the, I think it's twenty one seventy five west, I believe by memory. Um, they're going to the Happy Factory. We're going to put up some signs that say the Happy, Happy Factory Lane. Um. And so we got permission, I sit on that Happy Factory Board and we got permission from Cedar City Council to do that. So that'll be a nice, nice thing to do. Um, as as Paul mentioned, I attended the Cedar Beaver Watershed Council and I'll be a member on that committee. And look forward to being involved in those meetings. Um. Um, as far as HB one thirteen, right now, uh, HB one thirteen. Passed through the House Rev and Tax Committee unanimously. And then it also passed in the House unanimously. Um, it went to the Senate Rev and Tax Committee. I went up for the UAC Day on the Hill and lobbied. Most of the committee members, all of them but two. I was able to speak with, um. Some told me publicly they would support it, but then voted against it in the committee, but it still passed, I believe it was four to three. For HB one thirteen. Uh, there is some. Um, it's going, it's going to the House floor soon, but it, they circled it. It was up next and and they circled that bill because there's some other. Things they want to discuss and maybe talk to some of the Senate to make sure we have the votes. Um, there's also another. Um, Avenue Commissioner Blake has a sister that's a lobbyist up there and. And one of her associates brought it to uh, Commissioner Blake's attention that there's another. Sales tax that is available uh, for counties to enact. That's, it was like a point three percent sales tax. To um. That we can enact. That would not go on the ballot. That would just be determined by the commission to enact that. HB one thirteen, if that passes, it would be a point four percent uh, local sales tax option. And it would go on the ballot. So the point four, from what I think Luke has has talked to us about would cover the debt payment. The point three would be a little bit shy, so we'd probably have to do a little bit of truth and taxation or another, another avenue, but uh. In our meetings we had with the public, a lot of them said they would rather have a op- a sales tax option versus a property tax. And so. That is the, the, the direction we're going right now to see how that pans out and to see if they would support that. The advantage to that. It's like the RAP tax where tourism and other people that travel through our county. You have somebody from Vegas that comes up and buys two of his sixes at Home Depot and works on their cabin at Duck Creek. They're paying for a jail. So. You, you have a lot of that revenue that's, that's a, that's a big help to that. The, the, the risk with raising. Sales tax is you don't want to get your sales tax really higher than your neighboring counties because if, for big ticket items. Like cars and other things, um, you don't want to, you don't want to drive the, the business down there and then we lose, lose those sales in Iron County. So there's, there's some tricky balances there we've got to consider. Um, but we need a jail. We need to figure out how to pay for it. And that's just one other tool that we can have. Uh, depending on what, what shakes out.
But the point four would, we would be comparable to Washington County or below. So we would still be all right that way.
Right.
On our neighboring county. But there needs some uh, language put into um. Through the legislature, we've got to get some language put in to be able to use that for the jail. So.
I think those uh, would require a modification to HB four eighty eight.
Correct. Right, there'd have to be some words in there that said that the money would be allocated to law enforcement, so. That would have to be enacted as well. So, so we're, that's still up in the air a little bit. Um. There was a bill that was uh, heard this morning. I was almost late because I was listening to it this morning, but it was um. Rex Ship ran a bill. It was one fifty eight, I believe. It was criminal defamation where um, if somebody. In this particular case, it was an individual that posted something on Facebook and. And they had the heavy hand of government go after them criminally. And that's a law that's really in history, never been used much. It's been on the books, but hasn't been used much and. And Rex is running a bill to repeal that law. It passed the um. House Judicial Committee unanimously and then went through the House, I believe unanimously, didn't it? I believe. No, it wasn't.
It hasn't gone through the House yet, hasn't it? Just the committee?
No, it went through the committee. Let me look. But anyway, it's, it went through the, it was heard by the Senate Judiciary Judiciary Committee this morning was. It was unanimous in that committee. So it's looking like it uh. It, you know, it's looking good, but it's got to go through the, let me look here real quick.
The Senate also.
So it went through the House sixty one to eleven. And now, and and it, and now it's going to go to the, it'll go to the Senate, so. But that's another bill that we've kind of been watching and that's, that's a, in our, in my opinion, at least a good bill. Um. There's other bills we're watching and won't belabor those, but uh, we'll go ahead and if there's nothing else for this meeting, we'll go ahead and take probably a. Ten minute break. We'll, we'll resume this meeting at quarter after ten. We'll, we'll re- resume this meeting at quarter after ten. On the inside, they just cut the sheetrock. Perfect. Was there a lot of bees in there? Really? Good. That was good to get that done. Great. Thanks. We ready, John?
Yeah. And, uh, I just wanted to tell everybody, this agenda, it was the one that was not the amended agenda. That's why that public hearing isn't on there, but it's really on the agenda. This is just our packets.
Okay. Looks like we're ready to go for our ten o'clock meeting, which is, uh, we're about ten twenty. Um, appreciate everybody's attendance, those that have joined us. Um, we'll start out today with a, a public hearing regarding an application to the Utah Permanent Community Impact Board for funding to study the feasibility of a possible fire district in Iron County. Who is speaking to that?
George.
George, are you or?
Or I can. Yeah, unless you want me to do it.
Now, John, have we, have we met the requirements to present to CIB with, with our?
Yeah, we've already.
We're all good?
Yeah. Yep. There, it's not the same as CDBG.
Right.
Um, CDBG is a federal program and has a lot more stringent requirements. So we actually applied, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And then this is now our, our public hearing.
Okay.
So there isn't any action on this? It's just the public hearing?
Correct. Yeah. And, and if and when there's any kind of approval of any kind of funding, then that has to come back before the commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, I, I, this is exactly what John explained. It's, uh, it's for a study. It's a fifty-fifty split between Iron County and, uh, and the other, the other provider and, um.
Five county.
Yeah, five counties is the provider. Uh, and I would highly recommend that, that we do that. Uh, at least it's a, it, it's a, if we go that route, if we go the, um, the fire district route. It's a five-year, generally a five-year process. And I think this is a good starting point to at least study the feasibility. I'm, I don't think it's appropriate for me to express my feelings about it at, at this point. But I think it's a good point to start and study those, um, whether we go, where we go from here. So I would certainly recommend that.
Yeah. Uh, how, so how do our municipalities, Enix City, Canera, all, all of them feel about this?
Well, I think, I think some of them are lined up.
Okay.
Ready to, so I don't want to, I don't want to speak for them. Um, uh, I think that's, uh, uh, again, this is not, this is not, we're not in that decision-making, uh, stage yet. This is just a study to study the feasibility and how that would be, uh, that would play out.
So why don't you educate us real quick, George, on the pros and cons of having a district?
Well, um, given the growth of the county and, uh, how it's spread out, I, it, it would provide, um. It, if, if we went the, the route of a fire district, then, then we would become, those fire districts would become, um, taxing districts. And then that would provide for more fire coverage, firefighters, more permanent people, more fire stations, more equipment and stuff in parts of the county that aren't covered right now. Um, that's just my own personal feeling. And again, I don't want to, I don't want to lean this one way or the other.
So if you have those, uh, that fire district, most likely that would bump up your ratings, right?
Yes.
For the fire?
Yes.
For your, for your home ins- insurance?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And it certainly would, it would help the county out in that regard. So.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So with that, we will go ahead and, uh, open the hear, or open the public hearing. And those that would like to speak to this topic, if you would come up, approach the mic and state your name for the record.
This will be quick. I'm Chief Barton. I just noticed on the agenda about the fire district. Um, fire, EMS, law enforcement is a lot of money. It's a big deal. It's, uh, evil that we absolutely have to provide. You know, it's something that we can't do without. Um, and I'm all in favor for some type of, uh, hearing or, or a, a study on it. The only thing I wanted to voice my opinion about is Pergun is a small volunteer group. We're a hundred percent volunteer. We just, we want to make sure we are involved and make sure we're not left behind in any way. We provide service all the way from my post area, which is halfway to Penn, all the way to one oh one, which is Beaver. We go into Beaver about twice a year to assist them. Then we come, go all the way over U twenty. And it's big. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of demand. Um, and we deal with that a hundred percent. Pergun has absolutely no payment to any firemen whatsoever. Uh, any money we do get goes a hundred percent towards the equipment. And we have an excellent, excellent program. But we just want to make sure that we're in front of this, we're a part of this. And we just want to share that, you know, concern to us. And that's it.
Do you just do structure, Mr. Barton, or do you do any wildland?
We absolutely do wildland. We got a three thousand gallon tender. We got two, no, three brush trucks, uh, two of our pumpers. Um, we go out into the county. Ninety-two percent of our runs last year was county. We're more of a county-based. Pergun is such an isolated, I mean, we are a very six blocks by ten block area. You know, we're, we're locked in there. But no, we are more of a county fire department ever than we ever have been a city.
And do you combine forces with Ryan Riddle and those, the fire guys there or do they?
Yes. I mean, they're, they're state lands, you know, they're state lands, of which they're on, uh, eighty percent of our runs during the summertime. You know, they respond out and, and a part of that, absolutely. Uh, but you know, we, we cover it twelve months out of the year, not three months out of the year.
Right.
Uh, during the winter, we're extremely busy. Uh, we average, well, we had over seventy runs last year for a small volunteer group. If it's fifty runs or if it's a hundred, uh, we've never came and asked for, or different funding, you know, from, from you guys.
That's amazing. That is really amazing. Thank you for your, for your involvement and for your volunteerism. Because that, you know, that small of a community, having all of that, amazing.
We've been very blessed. Uh, but it comes down to the good people and the people care about their, their friends and neighbors. A lot of the people we deal with is, we've never seen them before. You know, the accident's out on Buckhorn. We've never seen them before. We never will see them again. But, uh, but the need is so great at those moments. We're there at the worst day and the worst time of their lives. And, uh, and so we provide that service freely. We don't ever charge back to the people or, or charge you guys extra. Uh, it, it, it's an amazing group of people.
Great service.
So successful.
That's remarkable. Very good.
But we're always happy to answer questions. You know, if you do a study, we want to be part of that study.
Absolutely.
And we'd love to come and share any, anytime you have a question about, uh, we call it our end of the county. You talked about going out on Buckhorn. We, we do. We have a lot of challenges out there. A lot of population that's popping up if you went out there in very strange, weird places.
Yeah, they really are.
You go out somewhere and you have no, you had no idea that there are dwellings out in some areas, you know, up in the mountains. Uh, they're popping up in places that I don't know how we defend them. We have very, you know, a concern of, of taking care of people. And, uh, we just want to make sure everyone's protected and, and earth safe. So. But we're always happy. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
I'd just say thank you for your efforts because that's amazing.
Thank you for your service too.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Dotson.
Hi, my name is Rob Dotson. I'm sort of, kind of, but I am representing Enix City at this time. Uh, Mayor and City Council couldn't make it, uh, to this meeting. Um, just really quickly, I wanted to express their opinion. Generally that this is a great idea to start out this conversation officially with a study of some kind. Back in, in, uh, many years ago, thirty-plus years ago, Enix City actually contracted through an interlocal agreement with Cedar City Fire Department to provide fire protection. Since those days, at, at the time and up till about five years ago, we paid our portion of the interlocal agreement or the fees that were, that were, um, desired and needed by calls. So if we received fifty calls, we paid a portion of their operations and maintenance, a portion of the total. And the county, of course, was involved in that same agreement as well as Canaraville. Um, about five years ago, Chief Phillips, in a, a spark of brilliance, changed that requirement and based it upon property values. So he rece, he actually, um, provides a breakdown, Cedar City provides a breakdown of the property values protected in a certain area, which is the same area as the Conservancy District. Um, that amount of, of property values and then the amount of total property values for each entity is broken down in their operations and maintenance. Five years ago, they included a, a, um, I guess you could say a, a, a truck or a, a type of equipment portion also that would be added. And then the, the last agreement that we all agreed to in December was, um, adding, um, facilities, like building to that. Now, if you look at those, all of those requirements, that's exactly what a district is. A district provides the, the service based upon property values as a, a property tax. So we're acting as a district now. Not only that, but we have a fantastic relationship, both. And, and if Commissioner Blake was here, he'd probably tell you the same thing. I'm not gonna put words in his mouth.
Heard him say that before.
He said it a few times. We have a great relationship with Cedar City Fire Department. They treat us as not just a customer, but as a partner. In fact, when we do have budget, they have their budget hearings. Um, Commissioner Blake, myself, and, um, Tyler Allred are at their meetings. And we discuss what they're attempting to do next, the purchases they're having. And we agree to it in practice, not necessarily in documentation, but based on our interlocal agreement. So we're acting as a fire district now. But the Cedar City and the county, or Enix City and the county and the Canaraville have no ownership. Now, good or bad, I'm not sure that it makes a whole lot of difference, except for when it comes to greater needs. We have a great fire rating right now, uh, ISO rating, which is slowly getting better and better based upon the amount of, uh, water protection that's available in our, in our area and also, uh, equipment and manpower. We're discussing now having, um, a north fire station. This has been conversation for some years with Cedar City and, uh, providing a north Cedar City fire station somewhere near the north interchange of Cedar City, or we should say the south interchange of Enix, right?
Yeah.
We'll just call it the south interchange of Enix. Though we could argue that forever.
Don't they already have one?
There is a north fire station. However, it is tucked out behind, down behind the bus garage. And it was built, not really built to be manned. And of course, there's a lot of other features to it that need to be expanded. And that's the potential also they're talking about. But that's Cedar City's, um, station. So when it comes to doing a district, we really have had these conversations with the fire chief and with some of their city council members. And we've, we've, we've discussed it over time. And then in the last CIB prioritization meeting last, um, year that, um, Commissioner Wood was at, the discussion came into play. Why, why do we not have a district or why, how do we find out?
About a lot of the districts in Washington County and how well they worked. And they talked about this study and I said, why not? Why not do the study? Just to see where we're at with it. I thought it'd be beneficial. So I've kind of been pushing it. So.
Yeah. And, and it really would be because anecdotally, we can have information from other entities. And we can, we can, uh, have a Pollyanna-type attitude about it where it's all pie in the sky and everything's wonderful, rainbows and whatever. But without hard information, I think.
That's right.
Do a disservice to actually start something like that without, without having the information. Um, we believe it's a good idea at this time, but without. We believe it's a good idea at this time, but without concrete understanding, I think that it would be a disservice to everybody. So in other words, um, on behalf of the mayor's city council, generally speaking, we're in favor of
The study.
Getting information. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Oh.
I don't know if it's even necessary to pile it on, but Perrin's in favor of the study. And I bet Dan's going to say something more eloquent.
I doubt whether it's more eloquent.
Not, not more eloquent, just a lot more words. So, um, so I, I just wanted to share, this is, this is not my opinion. Sorry, Dan Jessen, Perrin City Manager, former Iron County Auditor. I've looked at this, thought about it for a long time, um, back from when I was, um, at Enix City. And, um, then when I was, from the point of view from the auditor, trying to figure out the challenges with all of that now at Perrin City. Um, I, my perspective is this, um, I love the idea of a study and getting good information. I think that we want to make sure that we, um, understand the different, the different regionality. The challenges out in the West Desert are, are, are one set of challenges. Uh, the challenges in the Cedar Valley, um, where essentially you have, um, Cedar City Fire Department, which does a very good job, but is it, is it accomplishing the needs for Enix and the unincorporated county? And of course, now as, you know, you look at this large subdivision down at the very, very south end, you know, Cedar City Fire Department would cover that as well. How does that work? And, and finally, in the Perrin Valley, I'd just call it North, um, um, North Iron County. Essentially, we have little fire departments in all of these communities, but is it optimized? You know, we're having a hard time getting volunteers, um, so that we can have response rates good. Paragona, um, Chief Barton just, you know, they do an awesome job. But is there, uh, is there an advantage to having a district here as well? Some good concrete information I think would be great. I know that there's been several, um, thoughts about doing something here. But my point is, what is good for, um, the, the, the north part of Iron County, northeast Perrin Valley area, maybe different than what's good for Cedar City. So I would consider maybe if you did three districts, if you were going to do districts at all, or do a district here, but not there, or there, but not here, or whatever.
Probably that's what the study gives us.
Yeah, I think that's a great, having good information will, will really, um, help dial it in.
Well, I really think these comments would, were going to help a lot if and when the, the funds are allocated to, to actually ask those kind of questions before they start the study. And say, please consider the regionality, you know, please consider the various needs between very rural suburban and, and kind of a little bit of urban as well, so.
Even, you know, Bryanhead, if we talk about, uh, this north area, see, they, they provide all three services in one agency. You know, their, their police department is their fire and medical and they cross train them. It's totally different in Perrin and it's different in, in Paragona, but.
And I'm not sure that they're interested in, in, uh, coming into anything. I mean, it'll be part of the study, I imagine, but, but they're, they're kind of the thing in themselves. And they've done a really good job with that.
Well, the nature being a resort community on top of a mountain makes them unique.
It is.
But I'm totally supportive of the study.
As we had some of the conversations with CIB and our municipal advisor, uh, Marcus Keller, who actually recommended, uh, an outfit to, to do the study. That was one of the things that really stood out to me was that you, there's, there's just, it's very nuanced. And you want to have somebody that has experience conducting these types of studies. And I think having the, kind of the preloaded input from, from some of these various areas, I think is very helpful.
One of the biggest things that is going to really come to the surface is always funding. When you talk about levies, you know, do you create a new levy? And then the participating entities reduce their levy so that it's a flat thing? Do you, is it a true new levy? Is it, um, you know, how, how are they funded? How are they staffed? You know, is it, can you have centralization and have full-time staff versus, you know, volunteer staffs at a bunch of different places? There's, there's just so much to consider.
And Cedar City is such the big city, they still will have a lot of say.
Sure.
I, I'm sure. In, in, in the big picture of things, they will still have a lot of say. Even if we, you know, decided to go a districting.
Yeah. And, and does, does Cedar City participate in a central, you know, valley? Or do they not participate in everybody else, you know, all that? And then of course, if you're going to make any major changes, you have to, you have to gear up to, to Chief Barton's, you know, point. It costs a lot of money to build fire stations and apparatus and so forth. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. And you are very eloquent. Always have been.
Carter Wilkie, uh, member Cedar City Council. I will start off by saying I am not here on behalf of the city. I don't have any comment, haven't spoke with any of the other council members or mayor or city staff or any of that. So I'm just here on my own accord. I do just have a couple of questions though. One, what is the estimated cost of the study? I mean, I know you guys are applying, so it's a 50/50 split.
It's, uh,
Or how much have you applied for?
The total study is estimated to be about $40,000, maybe $50,000. So we'd be looking at, and if it goes up, it might be like, let's say 50 to 90. So you're talking 20 to 45,000 of, of Iron County funds where it's 50/50 split and, and CIB. Um, uh, under CIB, um, big projects have to go before the CIB board, but studies do not.
Oh, good.
Um, and they can be approved by staff. Um, and that was, that was kind of the discussion with Commissioner Wood and, and George and Commissioner Blake to, to, to ask me to, to kind of get that ball rolling, which is why we're here today.
And then, um, and, and you said you, you've already spoken with somebody who's maybe kind of specializes in these types of studies. Any idea on a timeline, once they get the go-ahead and the funding's been secured? I mean, is this a six month, a year?
I think in conversations, 18 months would be like a minimum. It's like George said, this is like a five-year process.
Gotcha.
Um, I think there's, there's a lot of information that needs to go to the folks doing the study before they even start. And then, you know, information gathering, and then they apply their expertise, and then they give results, and then those have to be digested.
Perfect. And then my last question, um, any kind of an idea from CIB on how long their process usually takes in a situation like this to find out if the funding's?
For approval for funding?
Yeah.
Um, we should know before May. They have, they have funding meetings, like CIB has, you know, hearing meetings and funding meetings and things. But again, we're kind of not part of that process where this is a, a study. You know, a big project, you have to go and present to the CIB and, and they, they consider that. And then they fund it at a, a later meeting. Whereas this is, for studies, they just made a carve-out so that you didn't have to go before the full CIB board for something like this.
Yeah, that makes sense. So I mean, again, I can't speak for any of the other elected officials of Cedar or city staff. But as, you know, for myself, I am excited to see the results of this study and we'll go down that road. And I mean, as been mentioned, obviously Cedar City is a huge player in this. And especially with them having the majority of the apparatus and the buildings and everything that would be included if Cedar was to include itself in this, in the fire district. So I'm excited to see where it goes and, uh, we'll go from there.
I appreciate that. And I will say, ever since we've had any conversations, a lot of the smaller fire departments have expressed concern about it. And I think they don't want to be left out of the process or to be overshadowed in funding. Um, and I think those are fair concerns.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
David Burton, Perrin City Council. Uh, I was just, uh, on the phone with my son. He's on the volunteer fire department here in Perrin. And Perrin and Bryanhead do work together. And Bryanhead does depend on Perrin as well. And they all depend on
On each other.
Each other. Paragona, Perrin and, and Bryanhead. So when they kind of express they don't want to be part of it, they are part of it. And they're, and the consensus is that we need to have a district here in this end of the county, in this valley, being with those three entities anyway, because they do interact and work together.
Well, hopefully that's what that information will come out of this study for sure.
They do depend on each other when it comes to structures and accidents and everything. And so they're.
Councilman, does, does Bryanhead come off the hill to help you?
They do, if necessary. They're all, they're all, when there is a notification of an emergency fire structure, whatever, all three entities are notified. And so then they're, they're to all respond according to what the need is.
Got it. So, that's great.
I appreciate, I appreciate that sentiment. I, I think it kind of echoes what, uh, was eloquently stated by, uh, Rob Dotson. But that a lot of the functions of a fire district are already being done and even at this level. So, and I think that's the idea of the study, is to kind of capture those nuances and, and, and be able to take a cold, hard look at it.
Just a question, would this create a special service district? You know, when you talk about?
I think that's one of the options, but this is, this is a feasibility study.
But I know, but I mean, if you were to implement it.
Yeah, that may be.
And I don't know, I mean, there was some discussion about, you know, taxation and stuff. And I don't know that that would be part of it or not. I, I, I don't, I've never done one before.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
And since Bryanhead has come up a lot, I just, I just want to add, uh, right now Bryanhead is, uh, led by a very dynamic, uh, uh, chief up there. Uh, but the fire district is a long-term solution to a problem. And Dan won't always be in Bryanhead. So I, I can't speak for Bryanhead. I'm not even going to attempt to. But I think that probably long-term, that when they see this is a long-term solution to some problems, I think that that attitude may change, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and I anticipate that there may be pressure, but certainly every entity would have to sign an interlocal before entering into it. I mean, that would be.
Absolutely, yeah.
Is there any others that would like to speak to this, open, uh, this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to public appointments. And the public comments portion of our agenda, three-minute time limit per speaker. If you have a comment, please come to the mic and state your name and that'd be great.
My name is Joe Wangler, 3147 South 7700 West. I had a lot of flooding issues last year from, uh, the west. The property across from me is owned by the city. And someone had blocked off the natural water flow. It flooded their property, which then came across 7700. 20 acres of my pasture land was underwater for a couple of months. And the other 20 acres that I have my house on was flooded from underneath. Never had any water on the top. It all came from underneath. I've been working with the county engineer, Rich Wilson. I did what I can do as an individual to mitigate it. I let him use some of my land. He started to dig a, a new, uh, ditch all the way down to Quich Paw Lake. They haven't been working on it for a while and they haven't started, uh, further to the west where, where it was blocked off that let the water go on to the city property. So I just want to bring it to your attention that that needs to get done before we have any runoff.
Is your home on, so your home's on the west side of 7700?
East.
East.
East of 7700.
Yeah, the water came across 7700 onto my property.
Cause, okay, cause I've walked, the, the year we had the heaviest runoff, uh, Paul Monroe and I walked that whole ditch from, uh, Quich Paw Creek down. And it, it, it feathered out into those fields and, and at that time didn't cross 77 at that time.
Well, what happened was, um, uh, the natural flow has been, um, filled in. And a diversion made that made all the water go over to the city property. It didn't just feather like it used to.
Okay.
It wa, it's, it's been diverted.
Who did, who diverted it?
Well, I think it was old George Vandenberg actually, but, um, it's neither here nor there.
I'm just curious.
Rich, Rich is aware of it and, and he said that something's going to be done. But the clock is ticking for water to start running. And the way that he's put the ditch on my property is kind of, you know, it's not a finished thing. So it's almost a worse thing than not, not having it yet.
So are they digging that ditch along your property line?
No, it's in.
On city property?
No, it's on my property.
On your property?
It's not on a property.
What was your address again?
3147 South 7700 West. It's not on the property line. It's 50 feet inside it.
So we're putting some coverts in, some large coverts?
He's just digging a ditch.
Oh, can, can we, can we have, yeah, can we have Bruce come up and speak to it? He's, he's our public works.
Sir, stay at the mic and then you two can both be up there and talk about this.
I didn't know he was going to be talking about this. Bruce Anderson.
Rich asked me to come to the meeting.
Okay, that's great.
I think he's ill.
I don't, where's Richard?
I don't think he's feeling well. He's down under the weather.
He didn't come in.
But he has ordered the big pipes and he's continuing to work with Cedar City to get that channel done up there. Curtis, um, we kind of ran out of good weather days. So where, where they are digging it down there is extremely muddy. Curtis felt like it was a better idea to go somewhere else. And he went down and worked on 800 South and cleaned up down there, something he could do in the water. But yeah, it's on the agenda. Um, we're working out there too, as soon as them pipes come in. Uh, the road crew and Curtis will get them pipes through.
They'll all be back out there.
And Rich is continually working with the city. It's going to have a little bit of a jog in there, but Curtis will take that all the way up there.
So, so what is the plan then?
What's that?
What, what is the plan then?
So they're digging a trench from?
They're going to trench from the subdivision up there where the water comes out of Quich Paw Creek in the canyon. It crosses underneath the Bumblebee Road is what it's called then. And then it just, it goes on the south side of Sunset. And then it kind of works over toward the center of the Sunset subdivision. And from the Sunset subdivision down to 7700 is what, and that's on city property.
That's where the diversion took place.
Yeah, that's where the diversion took place. And so it just would sheet flow. And the water is characteristic, characteristically come over 7700 over and over and over, even if you didn't see it. I've seen it several, several, several times.
It was interesting, the time that we walked it, it was a lot of water and nothing was going over it. So I, I'm not saying it doesn't.
Seen it.
Yeah, I've seen it.
I have to, I have to.
From '05 until last year.
This last year it went over it.
Changed where it crossed last year.
Yeah, a little bit.
A lot of that water, we put into a gravel pit up there then recharge. Um, so we take a lot.
I would say you don't put a, a significant percentage of it.
Most of the water that you're talking about.
He took most of it last year.
Last year it did. But a lot of the water that, that this gentleman's talking about is just water from the subdivision and sheet flow off of the, it's a pretty good grade that comes out of there. So if it rains and snow melt.
Just from that area.
It'll run to that area for sure.
Rich, the, the Quich Paw Creek, uh, the natural drainages that used to occur, it's, it's been diverted. It doesn't, doesn't flow that way anymore. And that's why he wanted to use some of my property to
And it's just along the road.
Go from up there all the way down to the lake.
Yeah, yeah.
Curtis got most of it done. We got to cap the road with some road base.
Well, thank you for letting us do that on your property.
Started on my property, maybe this deep.
That's great. Well, thank you for letting us do that.
Come across the road, but they have to get rid of the diversion up, up above.
Yeah. Rich and I went and looked at that. It's not too big a deal.
He just wanted me to bring it up. I thought he was going to be here.
Well, we're glad you did.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We appreciate that. And 77 is going, come, come on up. 77 is going to be chipsy sailed in the spring, so.
The summer.
The summer.
Hi, I'm Sue Olson. Um, I too live out in the Kichapaw area. Uh, my husband and I, uh, bought the property in 2015. We're from Nevada originally. And we completed the, the building of our home in 2019. Um, during that process, it was never disclosed to us that, that there could be any possible flooding out in that area. In fact, we actually was issued a letter during the, um, purchasing of the property that it was in a no flood zone area. You know, of course, we've gotten wiser since that time. But our concern is that we've, we've been flooded in 2019, uh, due to high snow levels and runoff. Uh, we're faced that again in 2023. The Kichapaw is, continues to be very full, uh, during 2023, during the runoff. We did get water up onto our property and we did have to make quite an effort to keep that water away from our home. Uh, our concern now is that the water in the Kichapaw is still very, very high. It would not take much to have it right back on our property again. And, um, so we're, we're just curious if there's anything in the works that's going to, um, control the water a little better, uh, prevent the flooding that we've been experiencing. And also the water waste that's involved with this flooding. There's lots of water that comes down to that area and, and to, um, our knowledge, that water becomes useless for any application. So not only are we concerned about our home and our property, but we're concerned about the water waste. So, um, we too thought Rich was going to be here today. Uh, unfortunately, he's not feeling well and he's not here.
What do you mean about water? What are you referring to, water waste?
Um, because our understanding that once the water reaches the south end of the Kichapaw, that it comes so polluted that it's not usable for any. that it comes so polluted that it's not usable for any application.
It's polluted. It just has high TDS, total dissolve, dissolvable solids. And it's, if they try to use that on crops, it can kill the alfalfa. So they, the district and I actually helped build that dam across Quichpaw. They're, they're running clean water in the north end and they use that to irrigate those pivots of the Jones Own on the north side of Fifty-six. And that's been a really good thing because it lowers the, lowers the water. So they're, they try to put, you know, the bulk of the water in there and then pump it out and use it on those fields to alleviate some of these situations.
With the volume of water that came in this year, that, that system kind of failed it, as far as the dike that you had, the water went over the dike.
Well, we had so much. I mean, the dike was about seven feet high and, and, uh, we built it as about as high as we could with the materials we had, but I don't think very often it's been, I mean, it has been high in, in two thousand, what, five and some of those years, but.
Before this year, we, the water was high and came on to the, our property in two thousand nineteen. Our property doesn't sit right next to the, the lake. We have a property in between us, between the lake and us. So it's not like we sit right on the lake edge. We don't.
Right.
But the way that, that, that water comes in there, it just sheet flows right, right across. I think to my understanding, what I've been advised is because the water really, with the type of soil it's setting on, it really can't get into the ground that easily because of the clay.
Clay.
There's a, my understanding is like four hundred feet of clay under that lake. And so it's, it's in, it's very impossible. Oh, there's Rich. Rich?
There's Rich.
Rich, come here.
Poor Rich.
Here, here, all your people are here and you're not here.
We've got, uh, the Olsons are talking about their situation up to Quichpaw and maybe you could, uh, weigh in a little bit. You know, we, Mrs. Olson, we, last year, we ran a lot of water towards Rush Lake. And we received some complaints about that, so.
My understanding, the water that went to Rush Lake is no longer there. It was able to get down into the ground and into the aquifer. Whereas where we're at, there, the water is still very, very high. Um, I don't, in my opinion, and I'm not an expert by any means, we cannot take that volume of water again this next year without actually flooding our home. My husband has worked tirelessly keeping the water away from our home. And luckily, because we were told that we were in a no flood zone, so we build accordingly where if we'd had some additional information and having not been residents before we built our home, we weren't even aware of the history of the area. So we were just going off the information that we were, we had been given at the time we started building our home. And luckily, we had set our home up a little bit just because we were wanting that wonderful, beautiful view and, and, you know, if we just had all the, you know, hindsight's always nice for everybody, I guess.
And there was a lot of water pushed towards Rush Lake last year. There was a lot of water pushed that way, but then we received a lot of complaints with that. And, uh, some, something's going to have to happen out in the Rush Lake area with those property owners to cooperate with us, to maybe dig some channels, to take it to Rush Lake rather than sheet flow out through their properties, which they said were, was causing harm to their livestock and things, so.
Our new ordinance for Quichpaw is very good too, to make people aware. And I'm sorry you was before that, but, but.
I am aware that we're part of that, that process also.
Going forward, new people coming in will, will have that knowledge.
And, and you know, and I appreciate that because I mean, even though that doesn't say the situation that we're in, we definitely don't want to see another family be in the same situation that we're in.
Exactly.
Because we do feel we did our due diligence. We went through a title company. We were issued a letter saying that it was in a no flood zone. And having not been from this area, um, there was no way that we could have known that this was going to be an issue. And, and, uh, in fact, we had the property from two thousand fifteen. We didn't even finish building, start building to two thousand eighteen and finished at the first part of two thousand nineteen. And at no time was that water ever an issue out there. So there wasn't even any indicators from the time that we bought.
Big event was oh-five.
You know, and so of course, you know, now, now we're getting that information.
So did you dike? Is that what you, have you built a dike?
Built dikes. We were advised in two thousand nineteen when it flooded, that we were advised to that maybe some dikes would help. And so we, we, uh, you know, rented the equipment and hired my brother to come out, who's an operating engineer, to come out and dig a, a, a big area around our home.
Water just permeates underneath though.
But it comes, it comes from the bottom up.
I think the issue, because you actually haven't had water in your home. It just, it just makes your septic system inoperable, correct?
Currently, yes, but that's from the efforts of my husband, who's out there continuously pumping water. Because we actually, our family owns the water closer to the Quichpaw than, than our property, my husband's cousin. And so he's, he's let us push that water off ours on his property, which we couldn't do if it wasn't without his permission and he being a family member. So that has saved it from coming up high enough to get, luckily, we built our house up. How far up did we build the pad? How far? Five feet. We built the pad, five feet. Otherwise, our house would have been flooded. So it was just the luck of the draw that we decided to build the house up on a higher, higher, um, pad at the time that we built, or we would be sitting right down there with water in there. But my husband does have to pump water. We are still pumping water as of right now out of our basement crawl space area. Not a basement, it's a crawl space area. We are pumping water out of that continually. We have automatic pumps in there that pump it out away from the house to try to keep the foundation and the structure of our house from being damaged. But, um, right now, the Quichpaw is very full and we haven't even started the runoff for this season. And, um, I just don't know that we're going to be able to do that this year with, with the way the, the waters come in and still standing there.
We have the Woodbury split, which historically been sixty, forty split. And when we start altering that, it's, it, we hear about it.
The farmers really tell us.
The Woodbury split happens in Cedar City.
I'm aware of where the Woodbury split is and, um, but also is my understanding that as construction continues in the growth of Cedar City, that a lot of that water from those areas get pushed down into that same channel. So we're not just dealing with the Coal Creek coming down seasonally. We're dealing with other water that's being put out in that area too. So I'm just kind of wondering where we're at with that, if, if, you know, with the current year getting ready to bring water into us and the Quichpaws. We have lost some water in the Quichpaw. It's not setting on our property anymore. It is still setting across the street on that property. It just hasn't receded very far and it's not going to take much to push it right back upon our property. And our concern at this point is that we're not going to be able to keep it away from the home.
Right.
Because it is so high right now.
Would you like to weigh in on this?
I have a, I have a question. Um, was it your construction folks that told you to build higher?
No, actually, we.
Or was it you?
We, we just.
Thank goodness.
It is, we just wanted it up higher and we have a beautiful view up there and we love our home and we love where we live. Um, you know, this has all been a surprise to us and it's something that we've had to deal with. But again, there is so much water still left and there's going to be water come down this season. Fortunately, we haven't had so far this snow.
Let's pray it comes down easily.
But because that water hasn't had a time to, to recharge or evaporate or whatever the process is going to be, it's still very high and it's not going to take much. And I, I really, if we get the type of water that we got last year, we're not going to be able to keep it out of the.
So Paul Monroe, before, when he gave his report, the, the north end where we built the dike, they put a thousand acre feet on those fields, which, which made a huge difference. So that, you know, before we did that, that would have, you know, probably, you know, that would have, um, made it even worse. But that's been a big, a big blessing to be able to use that water.
Well, you know, and the south end, south end has other waters that comes in there.
Right.
It does, from Canarville.
Yes, it has other water that can be controlled, to my understanding, because there is no gates or no, there's no.
We really can't control, I mean, we can't really control the Woodbury split either. I mean, it's a historic split, sixty, forty. And, um, and it just, Rich.
Cedar City owns that also. Well, sort of, but Rich does have some say.
So, so, um, this has been concerning to me as I've seen, I've been out there, as you know, on Seventy-seven Hundred, because of the road. And, uh, like Mrs. Olson said, there hasn't been a lot of, of reduction this year. And that has been a chief concern of mine is there's not very much give for the spring runoff. But there has been discussion, I haven't talked to Jonathan yet, about putting some kind of controls on Woodbury split this year. And as I've said before, our biggest con, concern is that we just don't, uh, redirect and create a problem elsewhere, as you were talking Commissioner Wood to the north. So, right now, I don't have a, an answer, but there has been discussion with both the city and with, with myself about putting a, a diversion there at Woodbury that, that, that split is a diversion. But as long as we're supplying the water that's guaranteed to the farmers to the west, then moving water to another location such as the Recharge Basins or out to Rush Lake, I, should not be a complication because it shouldn't be an overage of, you know, if you can't, if it co, if it comes to you in such volumes, you can't use it. It should go somewhere where, where it can at least go to the recharge. So I don't have an answer fully yet. But it, it is a concern, particularly for those properties as, as the Quichpaw has not receded very much this year as it has in the past. I remember the first time I, I was probably here a week when Commissioner Cousins took me out there. And it was nice and muddy, but by June, I drove across Quichpaw in two thousand and twenty-one. By the end of the year, there's, we have not been able to drive across Quichpaw since. And, uh.
Has there been any movement, Rich, um, with the property owners out by this wastewater treatment plant to dig a channel? Would they give it, we've got people that are willing to dig it.
Right.
Mr. LeBaron would dig a, a channel and send it clear it without affecting any of that property. Is there any movement in discussion with, uh?
There hasn't, not yet. And there would be, that would be a real blessing to everyone to, including, uh, Enik, which would like to see some of that water in the Rush Lake to, for recharge. So it's, it's just, uh, it's a landowner, water, municipality, and, and then chief concerns of, of how to protect the wastewater plant as well as the homes. So right now, we have a single property owner out there and if we just, um, if we could even keep it on the city side of the property line for most of the distance.
The Clarks said that they would, um.
Yes, and that's what, that's what Wayne LeBaron told me the other day, that he was talking to the Clarks. So if we have a place for it to go, I would recommend that we monitor how much we're sending west. And if we're meeting the needs of the agricultural folks out to the west and the recharge basin out to the west, then, uh, everything else should go to somewhere else where it can be properly used. So that's all I've got. Was there a question in there somewhere? Because I certainly.
Well, I just, you know, his, like I said, last year, we did, we did divert a lot to the north.
We did.
Rush Lake and we got.
Yes.
We got crucified for it.
We did.
But, but if we can work something out with the property owners.
If we could work something out, it would be good. So maybe, you know, we ought to try pushing that hard.
Right. All right. Thanks, Commissioner.
Any other comments, public comments? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on in our, um, agenda. What's that?
Oh, excuse me, I just, I had brought some pictures of what the lake currently looks like. Um, just so you can see that, that it is still very, very full of water and.
I saw you set that down.
I'm sorry, but you were talking. I didn't want to interrupt you.
How, how, uh, how recent are these?
Uh, we took them on Saturday, Saturday.
Okay.
And it's coming up.
Oh, that's the other thing. Um, Terry, Terry said that it's come up in, in their crawl space eight inches in the last, uh, two weeks?
Yeah, with, actually, within the last three.
Three weeks, okay.
And the water, the groundwater has risen up to about two feet over the top of our subject tank.
Yeah, do you want to come up to the mic?
Yeah, you want to tell us who that is?
Took the pictures, so I'll let him explain.
Okay.
This picture is the picture of the water line that Cedar City put through our private property. And, uh, that's just a mound of dirt over it. But you can see it's at the top of our moat that goes around our property that I built. Continue. This is the east side of our property. That is the lake touching my, it's in my property about twenty feet. That's a little further down the dike. Uh, this is the southern end of the east dike. I'll hold it. I'm sorry, this is not. This is a pond out in the front of my property that I use to pump off water if I have to, to divert it around the house. It's almost full. That's groundwater. And you can see that it's two feet from the top. Continue. This is my cousin's property. Those are his conexes. They sat there pretty dry until twenty nineteen. And, uh, they've been inundated with two feet of water three times in the last four years. Next. This is the, another picture of his conexes. And you can see the lakes right off of those conexes right now. Next. Did you go backwards?
No, but that looks like you panned to the south.
Yeah, this is, this is the east side. I think something's going on there. This is my catch pond and it's fairly, located fairly close to my, um, septic tank. It's got a, about a two-foot berm on it. And the water is two feet. So basically that water is almost to the top of the ground level right now.
Is your septic tank working now?
Yeah.
Is there a possibility of running, rather than having your leach field go to the south, go to the west and reroute that?
It, it does. I've got a, I've got a surface, uh, tank set up for, for moist ground. And it's more an evaporative.
I thought your leach field went to the south.
It goes to the south.
Right, but can you?
But there's two lines that go to the south.
Is there, is there possibly a rerouting that leach field to the west where it's not as saturated with groundwater?
See the west? That's the west of my tank.
You're pumping water to the west, right?
I, I pump it off to that tank. I pump that off to that other holding pond that I have. That is, we'll back up. The other way, right there, where that manure spreader is, that's the corner of my property, uh, on the southeast corner. If you look down, you can see, uh, there's a pond out there, a straight. The water is around our pond. Now that gives him probably two hundred feet left of his property. There's a hundred and forty acres that's covered with water right now. So, yeah, I'm a little concerned. Yeah, this is our.
Is that your home?
This is our home. This is our road into our home and that's that pond that we pump water into, to the highest point of our property, so it filters.
This is looking northwest?
That's where I live. And if you look at all the water on my property, it's pretty scary. That is looking north, yes. And that's a dike. That's the, that's the east dike. We've already gone through that. And that is the water line. Where that pole is right there is the dike where the pipe goes through for Cedar City Water Main. And that, uh, has a culvert in it that is useless. They put the culvert in there, the culvert's full of dirt and the water's going over the top of the culvert. There's no way for the water to go through down south. So it backs up. And then it ends up in my moat first. That's when I know I got a problem. So now you know I have a problem. And that's about it.
Thanks, Mr. Olson.
Oh, sorry. Let me pull it back up.
Right there, you can see, what, what are they looking at right there?
That is the east side of the moat and that is the, where the water crosses from the lake into my property.
That is the Quichpaw.
And now there's water over that area.
And that's before any runoff?
I think my cousin has twenty feet around those conexes that isn't inundated right today. And that was two days ago. So, yeah, that's a problem. You think everybody is worried about this, uh, northern side? That water always went that way until you put a split in there. I know you didn't do it. Excuse me, but that's why I'm not allowed to talk.
I understand.
Our ancestors put the split in there.
You start putting your heart into something, and you work hard for it. And then people think it's okay to do this. It's not okay to put it all toward us. It's not okay. That's private property. It's because of the water.
So we've lived here all of our life, and all of us have known this. It makes me sad for you folks coming from a different area not to know this because we've seen it do that. I mean, it went over 56 for many years, and we had, they finally raised up 56 to take care of that. But that doesn't, I mean, I feel so bad.
This has been going on for 100 years.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We've seen it.
Nobody knew that until we found out, we just found this out. I'm like, really?
We talked to some realtors that said that we always disclose everything when we had some other issues that we're talking about. Not all realtors are good that way. All they want to do is get a sale. I'm sorry, but there are good ones. There are some that are not so good. Because of private property rights.
Yeah, is that why?
I know. We did it now. We did it now, but we've had, people have talked about it ever since oh five. Why aren't we doing something? But it's hard to, it's hard to step on people's private property rights. It really is. But it's a good thing that we've done now. That since I've been in here, I'm very proud that we have done that now so that other people don't have to go through what you guys are going through. Because I can tell that it's so heartbreaking. It really is.
Come up, sir, could you come up to the mic and state your name again, and so we can get on the record?
Joe Wangler. When they had the class action lawsuit after 2005, a lot of the people that were in the class action lawsuit that lost the lawsuit were told this could never happen again.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
I.
Yes.
I had never heard that before.
I've never heard that.
Wow.
I can probably find somebody that has.
How could you say that?
I don't.
Sir, I, I owned my property back then where I am now. I remember when it happened. And I didn't know the Olsons. I didn't know that they had bought the property.
They came way later.
I didn't know anything until after they, you know, moved.
But you built your house after, after you saw the property?
My property's not affected by Quichapah Lake runoff. My issues are different.
It's the groundwater, right?
And the water coming across the road.
Oh, right, right.
But I remember when it happened, and their property had five foot of water on it. It was above, somebody had a round pin out there, the previous owners, and the water was above that round pin. I know because I helped them move it soon as the water receded. But they were part of the lawsuit, and that's what, they were told that this could never happen again.
And that's why they laugh, probably, huh?
They bought different property. They're on 7,700, but still.
It is a beautiful area. It really is a beautiful area.
Having come from out of state, we didn't have all the knowledge that all of you that live here have.
Exactly.
And, you know, you just do your due diligence. We went through a title company. They issued a letter saying it wasn't in the flood zone. We never had any problem getting building permits. We never had to get special interest. We did get special insurance personally when we seen that.
It is a problem.
Condition of what we were going to be facing. And so luckily, we do have flood insurance that is very limited in what it covers. But it covers more than your homeowners won't cover it at all.
Yeah, exactly. You have to have separate, yeah.
Once we moved in and started talking with everybody in the area and realized.
It's a problem.
I don't intend to speak on, in, as a representative of the Olsons, I just want to speak to the point that this year is a concerning year because it hasn't gone down. And we have snowpack up on the mountain.
Hundred and fifty percent on the Webster Plow.
Yeah, that's what the report was earlier.
Here we are in mid-February. It hasn't really started to come down.
And so to the whole area, it seems that we need to get a concerted effort from all the parties to divert water that cannot be contained at Quichapah or above this current level. So I would speak to that as a concern for the community as a whole, that we work with Cedar City and with those property owners, just as you said.
Could you get us a meeting set up over this exact thing?
And who would you like to be there? The city?
The city and engineer and.
We really need to talk to the Guymans and the Clarks.
Yes, yes.
See if they'll let us put a channel through their property to run it out. And Wayne LeBaron's willing to dig it, and let them, and if they'll let us put a, I find it, anyway. Last year, we were, you know, crucified was a pretty good term.
We were.
To run water out there.
It wasn't good.
But I went out there personally, looked at it, and I couldn't see where the water was hurting much, but they were upset about it, so.
There's a couple of other property owners, the Hayward's, between the, where the channel ends and to the north. So I'll look at the property owners, make an invitation. Because if we can, we have ideas about how to create a equitable water solution for the western farmers at the same time as diverting the water to the north. But again, it needs to be channelized in such a way that it doesn't harm, and just pass the harm somewhere else.
Yeah, because we flooded, we flooded.
Well, we certainly don't want to.
Flying L and all of those down 2,300 and 1,700, we don't want to do that again either.
Well, and the challenges you face is when we started running that much water to the north, we had a little, I mean, I went out and looked at it with you that night. It was hitting a little tiny tree about that big around, about three inches in diameter. And the next day, it looked like the Grand Canyon. It washed it out. And that was by Brent Hunter's pivot. And we, Brent almost lost his pivot because of the erosion. It happens so fast. And so it can, it can lead to other challenges as well, so.
And the hard thing.
And I guess the question is, when we start diverting water that was split historically, whether it was, you know, it was way, way before our time. But once you start diverting that, are we liable if it causes damage to somebody else out that way? I mean, it's a really tough.
It is. It's a complicated issue, but as you said, Commissioner, the flying L was a flash flood. Last year was almost six weeks of continuous water, which is a whole, whole different.
That was a challenge.
Animal, because in that case, it just begins to erode, and the duration mattered.
Right there by the airport lights.
Yes.
It got so saturated, and we had so much water that it started, the bank of that started calving off. And it moved, what was it, Bruce? Probably. Yeah, it was, it was calving like crazy, and we were, we called the nine one, we had two nine one ones where we had Western Rock. Cedar City let us use some of their riprap close by.
You worked all night, didn't you?
And if we would have lost that, it would, it could have filled the mill's pit with water and ruined millions of dollars of equipment. It could have filled the Western Rock pit, the Cedar City side of Western Rock, and ruined conveyors that Staker Parsons owns, and so.
We've all seen, we've already seen the plan for that area. We just need to know what we're going to do further to the north, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Bruce?
The big issue is if it gets out of where you was talking in the airport, you can never get it back until it stops. And it's going to go clear over the Bulldog Road because those pits are lower at Bulldog Road. And any of them, you know, the.
We breached those.
And the Spanish trails are going, that's where the water's going to go. If you let, if you let it breach between the creek and Western Rock's pit, it's going to go that way. And it'll go right through Bulldog again. In oh five, we had two track holes and the Bulldogs are fixing that.
Right.
Twenty-four, seven for probably 35 days.
And we ripped wrapped that channel around that bend where it was, where it was eroding, and I think it's pretty good now, but it's.
Hard to push water where it hasn't been. I mean, the other issue is where I dug the channel myself to the end of the north leg, right? Just stops and fans out, and it goes through a whole bunch of people's property. There's, there's a whole, what used to be a subdivision there.
Right.
And so the acquiring, all that is the hard stuff.
Well, and I talked to Cedar City about, if we continue to do that, we need to build, we need to dig, build a berm just east of the wastewater treatment plant to protect the plant.
Well, we actually even dug, when going even further back, we dug a channel. Steve was involved with it, myself and Kit Wareham, and I was on the equipment digging that went right through the middle of the sewer plant.
Right.
And it was a big ditch. And then first I left, and then they filled it in. I don't, I don't recall why. But it was, Dave Dial and I spent three months out there digging that channel. It was deep as this building. And then they.
They filled it back in?
No, there's still, there's still some that goes between.
Ninety-nine to 2,000-ish when we was digging that channel.
Interesting.
So I know, this isn't something that's just popped up all of a sudden. We've gone back and forth and back and forth, and then the property owners say yea or nay. But we really have to know what that channel will hold. If it gets out of the channel where you and I were this summer, it'll be billions of dollars.
And last summer, we never, we never sent more than 1,000 CSF. We were always under 1,000 CSF to the north. And I have confidence the channel can handle 1,000 CSF. It's when we exceed 1,000, then we, we've got more going to the, to the west than they can handle. Because we, as you said before, Commissioner, we can't do anything about Church Creek or Quichapah Creek.
They come in.
Even though New Harmony is not, I'm, yeah, they're not, Canaraville's is not extending very much that way. Those two
Some.
are sending quite a bit, and there is no interruption in those creeks, so. Anyway.
Well, that's the first time in my whole life I've seen it make it to Quichapah, from Church's Creek. Even in oh five, it didn't.
Really?
Right. Well.
Yeah, Quichapah or Church's Canyon is the first time in my whole life, and I've been involved with this for many years. First time I've ever seen it make it there was this year.
And it did for, for almost six weeks. Yeah. So, so I will, I will contact the landowners, and we'll set up a meeting, Commissioner, and see if we.
Yeah, let's, let's start, let's start that conversation just to see what we can do.
And I guess the main thing is we're, you know, when God dumps, which we're grateful, all that water up there has got to go somewhere, and.
It is.
It's always going to be hard because Rush Lake and Quichapah are the two low points in the valley.
Yeah.
And.
That's where it's always gone.
Well, and there's, whenever there's a low point, you can't.
That's where it goes.
You can divert it, divert it, but the capacity is limited. But we're gonna, we're gonna do something, and again, I just, as you've said, my concern and my, my heart goes out to the people out there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would like to make one more comment. But there is a big difference between Rush Creek and Quichapah Lake. Rush Creek doesn't have water sitting in it. It is able to recharge and get back into our aquifer. When it's in our area, the Quichapah, the Quichapah doesn't do that.
Right.
Otherwise, we wouldn't have any water sitting there like we do still at this time of year. So there is a two, between the two, there is a big, big difference on our ability, on your ability.
And we recognize that.
As a community to recapture that water.
And we recognize that. The challenge is private property between the wastewater treatment plant and Rush Lake. We have to get permission to dig a trench across there.
Right. But I just wanted to make sure that we understand there is a big difference in how the water's being preserved and reclaimed when it goes to Rush Lake. There's no water sitting there. When it goes down to our area, it just sits there and gets polluted and gets where it can't be used for anything.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, is there any other public comments? If not, we'll move on to item number three, discussion and possible update of 2024 per diem and mileage rate. Luke?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's start out with the mill per diem rate. We just wanted to go over these and get them approved and updated with any changes for 2024. You see the amounts highlighted in yellow for the breakfast, lunch, and dinner per diem rate? And then on the second page, you can also see this is the standard rate for Utah. So I guess the question is, and what we want to consider today is, if someone goes to a training, say in Salt Lake, do we want to consider approving that they can apply for the per diem depending on what city it is? So it'd be specific to that city. Like Moab, Park City, Provo, and Salt Lake are listed because their rates are higher than just the Utah standard rate. Or just go with the standard rate for all of Utah, which we did last year. And then if there's a traveler training out of state, then they would look up that specific city out of state and see what the rate was for that city. So we could leave it so there's only one rate for Utah, no matter where their training is. Or if it's in one of these higher cost cities, then they could get that, you know, a few dollars more for that city.
If you go out of state.
If you go out of state, or if you go to Salt Lake, like instead of getting 13, 15, or $26, it would be 14, 16, and $29.
Is that going to be pretty complicated for you to deal with?
I mean, as long, I'll send an email out to everyone and give them this website where they can print this off and then attach this with their per diem application. So, I mean, if they're going out of state, they have to do that anyway. And some of them have been doing that already, but we'll go back and adjust it to the standard rate, so.
I don't know, it's way more than the dollar menu at Wendy's.
Yeah.
I don't have that anymore.
It's not, it's not too big a difference, like for breakfast.
Oh, it's a good point.
Yeah, breakfast and lunch, it's only a dollar more.
So did we talk about putting them all, so like a lot of times when you stay at a motel, you get the breakfast with your motel?
Yes.
And so you could take the $13 and add to the other? Is that what?
So if, if breakfast is included at the hotel, then you would not get the per diem, the $13 per diem?
The $13.
Because it's included with your lodging. If, and we also get an agenda of their meeting. It's like all the UAC events, they usually have lunch or breakfast there. And if those are included on your agenda for your training, then you don't get that.
As, as, as it should be.
Right, yep. So.
Well.
Yeah, what's your thoughts on?
If you, if you're okay about having to deal with that, it's a little complicated.
You guys are good with that, let's keep it.
Are you okay with it?
We're okay with it if, you know, we'll just have to tell all the offices how to.
Yeah, just send out an email informing everybody of.
I'm going to link to the website.
Luke, is this the way you feel it ought to be with this tiered rate?
That's the standard rate that the.
Yeah, I mean, it's up, you guys, like I said, it's not much difference. It's a few dollars a day, so. It's not, yeah. Yeah, Mo, let's see, Park City.
Who's ever gone to Park City?
Higher, so.
Yeah.
And I think there are maybe a few trainings in Park City.
Do you?
Let's not do trainings in Park City.
Yeah. Stay home. That's true.
I will say for my part, I, I think I'm, my taste's a little bit, I usually don't spend that much on dinner, but I'll often eat roller food or something like that. So I think I'm an outlier, but I generally don't get to that even in some of the more expensive places. But I think, I think.
Sometimes if you're staying at Salt Lake and you're at the, you know, because you get a deal on some of the motels with UAC, and some of their meals are a lot.
It is shocking how much food's gone up, though. I stopped, I'll just. I went to the UAC day on the hill, and I was coming home, and I had dinner. I met my son and his wife at Cheesecake. I met my son and his wife at Cheesecake Factory and, and, uh, I had a hamburger and fries and a Coke. And I paid for, I paid for my meal with the county card and I paid for theirs with my personal card. But mine was twenty four dollars without a tip.
For a hamburger?
I, yes, like holy cap.
It is everything.
It's just so expensive anywhere and, and so, um, but that was, you know, that certain restaurant, but.
What about Luke? Um, uh, uh, along those lines, um, you know, sometimes the Commissioners and folks have to go to like Washington DC. And those are significantly more.
Yeah.
Have you considered that as well?
Yeah. So if it's out of state, they'll look up the city where they're going and it'll have the rate for that city.
Okay.
Like Mike, Mike's in Washington DC. He came in our office last week. We looked it up. He filled out his per diem thing and we gave him his per diem for the days and based on the Washington DC rate.
Okay.
What was it? Do you remember?
I, August did it with him, so I don't know.
Cause I'm sure it was more than twenty nine dollars for dinner.
I can't help but remember when I was in college, um, Ken Monford and I went back to Atlanta, Georgia. I was competing in the national VICA competition and we didn't have any money. We were so, you know, the, we just had no budget. And we, I remember we ate, Ken Monford and I ate every meal at a Greyhound bus Burger King. You know, Atlanta, Georgia, like you're saying, those are expensive towns and even that was forty years ago. But I remember that vividly. We couldn't afford anything but Burger King at the Greyhound.
When they had a dollar menu.
Anyway, things have changed a lot, so.
Yeah, they have. So yeah, if you're okay with that, I think that's fine.
And based on the city they're going to. Okay.
And then mileage is, looks like it's gone up a little bit.
So, yeah, so we'll propose that for the food. I want to go down to the lodging real quick, those other two amounts, the twenty and thirty dollars highlighted. And read in our code right now, just how it's stated. So it says, if an employee stays with friends or relatives or utilizes personal camper or motorhome, rather than paying the hotel motel when traveling, the traveler may be reimbursed at the rate of twenty dollars per day without receipts. So if they stay with family, we don't have to pay for a hotel. We'll give them twenty dollars a day or up to thirty dollars per day with receipts. So if they take their camper and they stay at a campground that's, you know, twenty five dollars, then we'll pay for that with their receipt. Um, to be eligible for reimbursement, the traveler, traveler must stay within a thirty mile radius of the event that they're attending. So, and I don't know how long these two rates have been here. I think they've been there a long time. Um, so, and it's kind of a little bit confusing how it's stated. Like if they'll stay at a hotel for a hundred dollars a night.
Well, it's gonna be cheaper.
If they stay in their camper, we'll only pay up to thirty dollars. So it's where we'd save more money anyway. So, I don't know. I would kind of propose that we maybe do away with the language for the camper part. They could still take their camper, but if they stay in their camper or with family, then we just give them a certain dollar amount for not using a hotel. And maybe we increase that amount, um, quite a bit. Like if you're with the family, you wouldn't have.
My mom, mom-in-law give me a receipt. Will you give me?
Maybe we just put it at thirty.
And I, cause the hotel, I mean, you're gonna.
You're a hundred dollars.
Minimum a hundred dollars. Probably more with the taxes and fees.
When I, I mean, probably three years ago, the Sheraton in Salt Lake, which is the cheapest I could find, was about a hundred dollar government rate. And it's gone up to probably one thirty now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, and that's, I'm not sure that includes taxes. It's, it's getting. I think Little America gives us a good rate, but they, it's still about a hundred fifty.
One.
Isn't it like one fifty?
Forty or something, I think was what I did last year.
So if they're staying with family or in a camper, I mean, that's gonna save the county a lot of money. Um, I don't know. What do you think on?
So do you think maybe we go up to like fifty? To give them, I mean, it's still gonna save us money, right?
I'd be fine with that. It's gonna save us a lot of money.
Save us at fifty at minimum. I was thinking fifty or sixty.
Is that what you was thinking? Yeah, I, I think fifty.
I'd ask for fifty. I'd, that's what I'm good with that.
Fifty. Okay. And, and what do you think about the language about the, if they're staying in their camper?
I don't think we can take, I think we'd take that out. I just, if they don't stay in a motel and they have to be out of town for training or whatever, I would say just give them fifty dollars. I don't know that we need a receipt if they're staying with family or what?
Mayor, pay attention. He will sleep in his car if you, if you change your policy. Yeah. I've, I've seen some of the places down the state.
It's still gonna save you money.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so fifty with your fa, with, if you're with family or a camper, either way, we'll do fifty. Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. And then the last thing is the mileage rate. So this is for, I guess first we'll talk about if you're going to an event training and you do not take a fleet vehicle from the fleet pool. You choose to take it on your own, then you could get reimbursed at thirty three point six cents per mile. Um, if all of the fleet vehicles are used up, there's not one.
Then you get more, right?
Then we do the IRS rate, which is sixty seven cents a, a mile for two thousand twenty four. Um.
Okay.
How that comes into play with the fleet rate is because when people do use the fleet, uh, vehicles, we bill the department. So Wade's department will bill each department thirty three point six cents a mile. So that's the maximum we would reimburse you for choosing not to take a fleet vehicle. And though, that changed a little bit. Um, the other change was we got a truck here in the fleet in Parowan, and then there's also a truck in the fleet for Cedar. And talking to Wade about it.
If you want to come up here.
Wade, so we were doing a higher rate to take the truck just because it's lower gas mileage, you know, usually more maintenance. So that would be the forty one point eight cents a mile instead of the thirty three point six. And Wade's been working on kind of a new system to track all of the miles. We've had some problems and stuff, so he's, if you want to talk about that.
Having, having the SUV and the sedans, the gas mileage is better. It costs a little bit more to drive a truck, you know that.
Yeah.
So I wanted to cover that cost, but, uh, as we get these new vehicles coming in, some individuals, I mean, it goes throughout the whole county, but it's, you, you pick and choose certain vehicles, you know, some are nicer. So they want to take this one or they want to take the truck. I'm trying to spread that out, that mileage out between all the vehicles. So one's not declining in value versus the other. I'm trying to keep. So this new, this new program we're looking at, we've actually got the program. We're just still developing a few things on it, but, uh, they would submit a, a request for, like they do now for a reservation. And then we'd get back to them and tell them this is the vehicle you need to take. That way we can just spread that mileage out throughout the whole fleet pool. So one car's not losing a bunch more value than the other. So when we go to turn them over, we can get our highest resale out of it.
Yeah.
And the, the little bit more mileage on the truck too is to kind of deter them from taking a truck if they really don't need a truck. If they're going off road or they need clearance, you know.
That makes sense. Well, and it devaluates the truck because they're worth more to begin with, right?
They are. And they get better gas mileage. The, the cars get better gas mileage too. So we're saving money that way too. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
And each, each quarter, um, I get a report from Wade showing how many miles each department used, and then we bill those departments quarterly. So, and then his new assistant and the, I think they're working on new software to get that.
Track that a little better.
Yeah.
That'd be really good.
Yeah. Any questions?
Nope.
Good.
It's good. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Okay.
Um, I would move for approval of the update of the two thousand twenty four per diem and mileage rate presented, um, with, from Lucas. Um, is there any?
Um, it seemed like you had wanted to, uh, go with the tiered program for the, the meal rates?
The tiered program for the meal rates?
Yeah, city specific.
Specific, city specific. Um, and then, and then change the lodging where you're not staying in lodging, that you get fifty dollars, right? And.
And you don't have to get a receipt from your grandma?
And you don't have to get a receipt from your grandma. And it's different with the pooling, uh, vehicles, cars and trucks.
Cover it all?
I'll second, I'll second that motion. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Luke.
Thanks, Lucas.
Number four, discussion and possible consideration of the dedication and or use agreement of APN eight twenty to Parowan City for Parowan Valley Water Recharge Project.
We're at two, the third item on the agenda. Congrats.
Man, what time is it? Almost noon.
I will try to be quick. Um, I do want to introduce, we, we have, um, some people here as well. Uh, Jason Bradshaw's here. Uh, Jason's with, he's the president of the Parowan Pumpers. He's also with NRCS. Um, he's wearing his Parowan Pumper's hat. Um, we have, uh, the honorable Mayor Molly Halterman. We have, uh, Councilman Dave Burton, um, here as well.
With his new assignment.
With his new assignment. I'm gonna give a little bit of a background because not everybody knows, but I'll be quick. Um, so what we are doing, um, we're really, 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 really excited about this project. Uh, we're doing a water recharge project for the Parowan Valley. Um, it involves a new diversion structure at the mouth of the canyon, what we call the breakwater. Um, this structure will cost anywhere from, um, million to million and a half. It's gonna be similar to, um, although the design is probably gonna vary, but what, what is in Coal Creek there just below, just right by Brad's and the county, um, um, tourism building there, um, where it will pass the floods on by, but it will divert for the irrigation companies, um, there. It'll, it'll serve multiple purposes. Um, it will have a conveyance that will go to the irrigation system. We'll start at that point. Um, and a conveyance that will go to the new recharge location. The, the reason why we're moving all of that is that we have to in priority take out the, um, the irrigators water first. And then, um, by definition, the water that, that gets past that point, um, any high water, the pumpers, um, have filed a, um, a recharge, um, permit, actually for the whole valley with multiple points of diversion, and that's one of the points of diversion. So. Um, that's in a nutshell, the project. This is a, um, this is a picture of, of right here at the breakwaters where the, where the new diversion will be put. North is to the right, of course, as we're looking at, um, looking at Parowan. Um, there will be a pipeline that will, the recharge portion of it will come down around the cemetery, come back up to right around the entrance of the fairgrounds there. And, um, to this point here on the east side of the fairgrounds. At this point, there will be, um, two different options. One, it will be in a, at least until it's improved, it'll be in a canal, which will come down around the bottom. And, um, we actually have the county put in on city property, a recharge, um, little pond here. It, um, will, will may, depending on the, the route, may tie into that recharge. And then eventually out across here, there's an old ditch here. And, um, to this, of course, the site at the, at the, the gravel pit. Now, this is not a new idea. This is an idea that's been around for a long time. Um, the, the original idea, I believe, um, should be credited to Steve Platt, the old county engineer, who identified this as a really good recharge site. Um, and Alma Adams, former commissioner, was a big proponent of this. The original plan was to take it down three hundred east. But, um, the amount of, um, the sheer cost of that, there's a high pressure gas line that runs all the way down three hundred east. All of the, everything in the road, plus the road itself, the, the, uh, cost of that project would just be many multiples of what this is.
Plus the attractive nuisance of kids drowning.
Right. Well, if it was in an open ditch for sure, but if in a pipe, it would be extremely expensive.
It was talked about as an open ditch at one time, dude.
So this is actually the, um, this is the slope, um, the elevation profile of this channel, just to give you an idea.
What's the elevation slope from the, uh, on that stretch east of the fairgrounds? Is that dropped pretty quick? And what are you gonna do for, are you gonna have to sell some water bars, some, uh, rip rap bars to drop that slowly?
It's actually pretty gradual.
It'll cut pretty bad.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have it, um, in fact, the RFP is going out today for our design engineer. Um, we've, we've been in, in communication with, um, with Platt and Platt for some preliminary design. Um, and also been in contact with Bowen Collins, who has done so much work on this channel. So we'll see who we hire, but, um, we, we've got to, we've got to make sure that the diversion is designed correctly. So that it'll actually, you know, I think, um, to quote Raymond Prestwich, sometimes we design these things for water. We don't design it for logs and, and boulders. So we gotta make sure that handles a flood really well. And that in the meantime, when it isn't flooding, that it's able to maximize our, um, well, I'll get into that on the benefit. But that it'll, that'll actually, um, do the, run the water like we need to. Um, so yeah. Um, that, that is a potential problem.
If you drive out down, um, the, where we did the recharge from Quichapah Canyon to the gravel pit out, uh, by Bumblebee, we had that same, about that same kind of run and we just, and Curtis DeMill and Bruce's crews helped us and it works good. You go out, look at it. We did a section and then dropped us some rip rap and section, dropped it and it, it worked pretty good. But if you just go straight down, it'll cut.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Um, one, one, um, option two of this will solve that problem for us. And that is this whole area right here is, um, is owned by Alex Meisner and he has a proposed subdivision. Um, we'll, we have yet to see whether that'll annex into the city or whether, whether it'll be county. Regardless of whether it's city or county, um, um, we've talked to Alex. He, he's got to retain all of his drainage that, from all of that hard surface that'll be put in. And either he puts in a big retention pond or the other idea is that we actually run this pipe out into that subdivision and, and as he develops, he puts it in a pipe and he takes all of his street runoff and puts it in that same pipe. So we get the added advantage of capturing all of that storm drain and putting it in there.
Recharge.
And recharge it. And so he has less that he has to worry about detaining and more that can go in and for recharge. Now, the entire subdivision won't, there, if you draw a line, it's right around here. Anything to the north of that will not flow back from gravit, from a gravity standpoint. But, um, you could capture probably about sixty, five to seventy percent of his subdivision runoff could go in there.
So a quick question on that.
Yeah.
So, you know, like the Western Rock pit, we, we have the runoff for several months. And it, it, it goes in there and it dissipates and then they can go back in their mine gravel or whatever. So with our pit, Bruce, are you gonna propose to, are you gonna be able to deck across there? So like in the summer monsoons, you get water in that pit. Is that gonna mess up your operation or are you gonna have to isolate it?
So it will. It actually will mess it up. I, uh, wish I was involved with this a little bit further. But right here, that property line, we've already mined from here to here, and then there's eighteen acres that we have right here. Parowan has five right there. It continue to need to be mined. I don't know. I guess it's my.
Can we start mining that and let them use that for recharge?
You have to access it by the pit.
Yeah, I don't know where.
I don't know how we could access it otherwise. Is there a different way?
There is a road right here that goes along here. I don't, I don't know if you could start and, and work in here and mine. Obviously, one of the, one of the challenges is, is that water, especially in that gravelly area, that if we, if we start doing a lot of recharge, would it seep over? I know they've had that problem in Western.
That's what we're.
To some degree, but you have to have a lot of water to do that. Western, it has to be pretty full for it to start seeping into that south pit. I mean, it takes a lot of water to push that through. And it's not, it's still not that bad. Once it does, it's.
Yeah. So it wants to go down, right? And so.
Uh, but it does go sideways some, but.
You get it high enough, it'll start working its way across.
The Western has worked.
All goes sideways.
What's that?
The loop pit on twenty, on Bulldog, it all goes sideways. None of it goes down.
But even this last year, when we recharged so much, Western was able to work around it. They create a little pond down in there and they dammed it off and they were able to work around it. But, but we were pushing water into Mel Clark's pit to the north too, and he was complaining a little bit about it.
So it's not totally mined. Um, that's, that's one thing that, yeah, and it's not, because we can go deeper is what, what.
How much deeper, Bruce?
Probably.
Well, the pit to the, yeah, there's eighteen acres that isn't even open, but right here on this, um, go from here to here to the, to, uh, Applegate's pit. He's way deeper than we are. There's still good gravel there.
So we pull a lot of gravel out of that pit still.
Oh, yeah. And if it just comes and goes like, well, the one at Quichapah came in and flooded us out. We were gone. We came back eight months later and we finished mining. But if it comes and goes, but is it gonna hold it? What's it gonna do?
I bet it'll hold it good enough. I mean, I don't. I bet it'll hold it good enough. I mean, I don't. Based on the Western Rock.
Is it going to stay in there and, and to where we can't go back in? So, so the really.
It'll, it'll.
It'll drain.
Let me, let me finish the presentation and then there's all kinds of ways that we can go.
Yes, yes.
But it's your meeting. You can kick me out if you want.
No, no. Richard's putting you out.
You got cheap seed stuff happening.
So, um, right now, and these are really, this is napkin type estimation and, and I hope it's high. This is a three and a half million dollar project. We have, um, we have.
Your diversion?
That includes the diversion. The diversion's going to be in the neighborhood of a million to a million five. The pipeline, now this doesn't, I didn't, I didn't get, get all the way into that because there's, there's two pipelines. There's one that brings it down to recharge. There's the other pipeline which, which takes it down to the existing diversion. Um, which is, which is further down the channel. That diversion has to come out. And we have to pipe their water down to them. Which there's many benefits of doing that. But the pipeline, um, without going all the way down to the pit, that's again, a hybrid. So it gets piped to a certain point and then it can now finish or the subdivider finishes it. It's in the neighborhood of a million and a half to two million just for pipe. So.
How big the pipe is that?
Thirty, thirty-six inches. Um, so we have, um, we have a, a grant we got from the county. We have city ARPA funds. We have the city culinary depart, um, water fund that's putting in money. Um, we have the pumpers that are putting in money, plus the pumpers have a grant that has been redirected here. We just barely got a million dollar, um, grant from the, from the, the state. And, um, Jason has applied for a water optimization for another million. Um, plus we'll have a lot of sweat equity. So assuming we get all of that stuff, we're going to be close to three million, um, funds raised. Um, and we are pushing forward. We are, like I said, we're going out to RFP for an engineer. But this is a, this is a really big project. We have the reservoir company. We have the, the canal companies. We have the pumpers. We have the city. We have the county. We've gotten everybody onto the same page. Um, which if you know farmers.
They're very hard.
That's really hard to get a consensus. We have, we have everybody in this valley really excited. Um, this is, uh, USGS. Everybody has identified this site as being the best recharge site that we have. This is the low hanging fruit. Um, so it is, that's, that's kind of where we're at. The benefits of it, as you know, with the groundwater management plan that is now implemented, um, is massive. Um, we're, we're a couple of, uh, years, um, would you say five, 10 years behind Cedar Valley in implementation? This will be our first large recharge project. Parowan City alone will, will lose eighty-six percent of its water rights due to the, to the, um, exactions or the, um, curtailments on the groundwater management plan. So the city is, is, is in this thing, um, for its success, no matter what. Um, many of the farmers are going to lose a lot of their water. Um, and, and at the end of the day, to see the Little Salt Lake, which is a dry lake, full of water, when we could have all that water in the aquifer is just, it's just sad. Um, we've just got to do something with it. Um, as far as the irrigation, um, they have currently, they have an air, they have a diversion and they have a laney sluice. It takes none of the sand out. Um, in fact, it's a little worse than what they used to have, but, but it's functional. The problem with that diversion is, is, um, it's been identified on the flood channel, um, as being a, a point of, that would actually cause flooding. If we have a one, one hundred year flood event, it's, it's so high that it'll actually be a point of failure, not to mention the main street bridge.
Is that the one off of what, 300 south?
Yeah, it's 300 south. So in doing this, we'll be able to take that diversion out, which will improve the flood channel. But the biggest, um, benefit from that is that it allows us to, to take the channel about six to 10 feet deeper in that area, which will take our bridge that we, we've had a, we've had a grant for, that we have a grant for five million to rebuild the main street bridge. That'll, that'll bring it down. And that was five million and twenty nineteen dollars. We should be able to build a new bridge in the neighborhood of about three million dollars at the existing main street location, but that diversion has to come out in order for that to happen. That's, that's another reason why the city is so, um, interested in pushing this forward. Um, even if it's a phasal approach at the mouth of the canyon, even if we have to borrow some money to help this process get to the end of the, it, we, we get so much of a gain on our bridge project. Um, not to mention, if we can build a better, um, system up there, we can remove the sand, which will, which will give, um, you know, they, they take this water and they put it into pivots and that sand is just like, it is just, it's brutal on those pivots. Not to mention the pipeline structure itself. Um, so there's just, it's just a win, 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 win. The winds keep coming, but it's just so complex. So we've got to get to go. Here's my point. The linchpin on this entire project, and we're about ready to start spending real money, we have to have a place for the water to go. So, um, you know, it's, can we figure it out? We understand that, we understand the need of the gravel. Um, we understand, we understand that. And I, I say that fit, the.
Because it's for Parowan Valley.
Right.
That's where we, and we don't have another pit.
I've been waiting for Paul to say us versus you guys. And I, he didn't fall into my little trap because, um, because this is Parowan, it is Iron County. This is for the, for the north part of the county, probably the, the single biggest, um, project we have going. But we've got them, we need to make sure that we have a legal use of that pit or all of this thing comes to a, comes to a halt and we got to identify a different site.
Well, I'd, I'd like to take it a step further, Dan. Is, can you work with Applegate's? Cause I don't think with a thirty-six inch pipe, I mean, you look at the size of the Western Rock pit and we, we had to stop filling that this year.
Yeah.
You, you're going to have way more water than.
Well, in a year like, in a year like twenty-three, oh, yeah.
You, can you work out a deal with Applegate? Do they have other property and work a deal with them to do a spillway and pipe it down to Applegate's and use their pit for some recharge and have them somewhere else?
So we're, we're, and I need to talk with them. Um, they're actively in that pit. They do own land to the north. So I don't know if they would allow that to be a, a, a secondary site. We, we are looking at, um, several options. Um, one that we identified, in fact, we got really excited about and somebody drilled a well right in the bottom of it, the person who owns it. They drilled a well, I think, so they could save themselves like thirty feet of, you know, over, I, anyways, so, but maybe they could, maybe they could work, work with us. There's, that's a, that's a no brainer. We could get, uh, water down to that site, um, without too much work.
Is it a very big pit?
Um, it's, no, no, no. This is a pit just, just north of, uh, who owns that? Dave? Just north of you? Jeff?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he, so, um, their, their son is building a house down there and he, he drilled a residential well right in the bottom of it. But we could get water to that pit as a secondary site. Um, so there's the Applegate pit, there's that one. This one is the low hanging fruit and, but this is not the, this is not the, um, the only thing that's being considered. Um, in fact, if, if we wanted to have Jason come up, he, he could talk about there, we're, we're looking at doing some stuff on the, uh, on the west side of the freeway as well. But at the end of the, I mean, we're, what we're looking to do is to, is to create some, some holding ponds so that they could, um, irrigate and, and pump from those instead of from their wells. Um, type of a thing, rather than just like a massive storage.
That'd be over the freeway.
I'd be on the other side of the freeway.
Yeah.
You need approval from us before you spend all this money.
Well, we, we, we just need to know, however we figure it out, that, that all we're going to do, we have a place to put the water. Whether it's, whether it's, you deed it to us and then we have some sort of an agreement that, that you're able to use it for whatever. Or the other way around, you keep it and we have some sort of an agreement that we can put water there in perpetuity. Um, and, and how feasible is that? That, um, by the time, because there, there will be, you know, sediment and things like that. I, I don't know if that's a big problem. You know, if, if, if there's standing water in there, um, you know, that pit right across from Mel Clark to the east, there's water in that thing year round because the bottom of it has, has pretty much filled out. It still go, it still goes into the sides, but what happens? What's, what happens when that is the way this pit is? At that point, you know, to be able to use it for gravel is, is not very viable unless you get in there and you scour the bottom and get it to recharge again. So, I don't know. Um, ninety-nine year lease, um, it, like, like we're open to everything. We, we, we don't care as long as we know we can put water there. That's, I guess, the ultimate.
I think we'd want to continue ownership of that land.
I do too.
But there has to be some kind of agreement with sediment that, to where you guys would help maintain that and haul the sediment out. I mean, that sediment that we have in the Schmidt pit, we're going to have to address that at some point. The Schmidt pit took a lot of sediment this year. And, um, Western Rock's taken a lot of sediment, but it, and, but they haven't, I mean, it, as it's washed down and it's washed gravel with the sediment. So I think you go down and crush most of that stuff that's deposited down there and be okay. The, the sediment, the, the sand that washed in the Schmidt pit is mostly just pure beach sand and it needs to be removed.
One of the advantages of this design is that we're not taking water straight out of the, out of the, um,
Stream.
Stream. We are going to take cleaned water. We're going to have a, a much better improved, um, system. What we're talking about right now is a,
Don't you take it off the top?
A radial, um, a radial arm gate. So we can raise that to allow the floodwater. And then we're going to take water off the top, which should help with a lot of the sand. And then it'll go through a, a large laney sluice. Then it'll go into a, a prioritization diversion. So we're going to take as clean water as possible to put.
And that's good. Cause if you fill that pipe with sand, you're in trouble.
Right.
Big trouble.
I was just going to say, uh, you'll talk to your engineer about this, but we just dug that, uh, that, uh, recharge pit that right there to the north of the, the grounds. And if, if that becomes a second sediment. North of the.
North of the fairgrounds.
The fairgrounds, north of the ball field.
Where we're putting that water that comes off of.
Gotcha, yes.
Right by your house. Do you have room in your basement for this? So, so if we, if we take it off that pipeline and then run it over there, that would be another, uh, before it ever got to the gravel pit, it'd be another sediment pond before, and we take it off of the top of that one. Even though that's only, uh, about an acre, it, it would be, I mean, that, that, that's going to take water.
And that works really good at the Schmidt pit because we put the sediment in the Schmidt pit and then it, it, um, it cascades over into the county pit and then that new pit with, through a pipe. So they were clean as could be. And so you just have all your sediment. And like he's saying, if you can run in that triangular piece first.
Right.
Capture the sediment there and you're putting clean water in our, in, in the county pit.
Right. Yeah. Use that as a, as a sediment.
Yes, that'd be, that'd be awesome.
Debris basin. And, and this guy right here, that's his favorite idea. He keeps telling me every time we talk about it.
That water has never reached that pit and after it runs under that road, it won't even.
It's right under, it's gone.
It just goes down.
That's awesome.
And the county does have access to that eighteen acres. Not just through the pit. You can access it from that road. That comes right up to that road and you can start on that east side and start working that.
As long as it doesn't seep over into it, like Bruce said, it goes sideways sometimes, but.
But you do have access.
Yeah, okay.
You don't have to access.
The best thing would be to, maybe if Bruce is okay with it, start a new pit there on that eighteen acres, let you guys use that and then just go back and forth. You know, you could, that would be.
Is there overburden on that, Bruce? How much?
I can't remember. It's three to five feet, something like that, isn't it, Dave? What? We pushed a lot of it back up to the east. You can see it in that picture.
There might, there wasn't much overburden in that triangular piece, was there, Rich?
No.
Not only that.
It's further up. So the further you go down.
It silt's on.
But there's a few places where it's been dug and only down like five feet, you're getting into gravel, if I remember right.
And I think it's about three to five feet over.
So.
I would like to speak to something else if that goes with you, Flav, Flav.
Absolutely.
So this isn't the first for Parowan. Um, we've dug in, in Lyle's pit before. There's recharge there. After the water goes underneath the freeway. Um, Jamie and I dug a big pond over there next to the sewer or the, what is it? The turf farms, great big huge one, and they're irrigating out of it. Um, there's recharge, the water, no water. Let me think here. How to say this. No water reached the lake from summit at all this year. We was able to manage all of that.
All of that.
I went and showed you that.
That was great.
Um, and there's another recharge project in conjunction with Donnie that I got into with him last year that the water coming out of Little Creek will be able to go into the ground as well through a gravel. So it's not, this isn't the first. That's not.
No, and Donnie's done a lot of work this.
But we've even had water coming out of this channel that still, there's still a lot of water going from Lyle's pit, not so much at the.
Which one is Lyle's pit?
On Highway ninety-one.
Okay, yeah, I know where you're saying.
On ninety-one, we've dug into there several times and it goes in right there. And they're using the water to irrigate out of that pond that's between the church farm and Scott Holyoaks. So there's a pond there that the county, that I dug myself. So I know there's other projects and there's other ways to do this. I like putting it in the pit if it'll get out of there fast. The problem I have with it is I'm charged with building and fixing roads, right? Last year, we were, we were crushing gravel in the pit in Cedar and I wasn't able to make what we wanted because of the water was coming. Now I'm going to have to buy gravel from Western Rock or one of them other companies to finish seventy-seven hundred. So when you do this, you got to weigh it out. What's, where, what do we want? Because it does, it does cost us money in the, in the sense that we can't do our jobs. Well, we can, but it just costs more to buy gravel.
So with the recharge we did, you couldn't crush? I mean, that's what you're saying is you don't have an.
You kicked me out of there and said, we gotta, we gotta put the water in here. That crusher guy's got to get out. And then that's when we moved to Parowan and got in that big headache with him and I didn't get enough made in Cedar to finish seventy-seven hundred.
And then the, and then the residents were so mad about it.
I could haul it from.
I thought you had a stockpile that not good when we went in there.
Not very much.
I'll probably need seven to ten thousand ton.
There's still a pretty good pile there, is that?
I still got to haul. I, we're still working on it.
Should we be crushing that?
There's always a, I guess, I guess there's always unintended consequences, what I'm saying, when we do these.
This is our main gravel source for Parowan Valley.
It is.
And, and I totally understand how important this is to Parowan because this, it is. It, it, I totally understand that.
And it's clean and gone. It, there's always a point where it costs us money, that there is an unintended consequence.
If, if there's any other solution for us to get gravel anywhere else.
I just had an idea.
Oh.
He'll tell you.
Okay.
No, we've talked about it. I was just telling you to go.
Oh.
Can you speak to that site right, click there where your mouse is? Can you speak to that about?
Yeah, that's the eighteen acres.
Right.
Okay.
What about opening that up?
Well, he's afraid that it's.
So this, it's this line, the gravel pit is actually right there. This has already been opened from this side. It's not, that gravel pit doesn't end right there.
John, go to the satellite view of that.
Um, this is what I've got. I couldn't make the satellite view work on the.
This'll work if you can get down in there.
Sorry.
It's pretty close.
But, but look, it is coming over onto that eighteen.
It's already there and then we've pushed up that overburden up onto there. Yeah, it is.
Bruce, can you go further north? It goes down there quietly. Cause it follows that road. You can see the fence line.
Can you, can you, can you draw a line around the eighteen acres?
Well, I'm working on that. Give me a sec. Well, here, let's do it this way.
Do the parcel viewer, not the plat map.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So when I come in from the west side right there, there's that overburden. And then I can lose a lot of that and use it for binder, right? If I got to go from the top down, it doesn't work as well. Cause then you're, you're not already thirty feet deep.
Can you mix some of that overburden with the?
We did, yeah, just to keep a little binder in it.
Okay.
But right now we're having to push it off to the, off to the east. But we've already encroached into that somewhat.
Well, that's what we're trying to do with Staker Parsons is move them out of that south, south pit and move them to another area to start a new mine. And then we can, you know, we just rotate pits.
We can, and we can. It just costs money, is what I'm saying.
So.
There's an all, there's, there's always an unintended consequence.
Is, is, I guess, maybe the question is, is Parowan willing to help us remove some of that overburden, you know? I mean, so we can create, because this is going to cost us money, Dan. I mean, I.
Right.
Is Parowan willing to help us remove some overburden and?
This is actually even Parowan's gravel right there.
Where's ours? Is that, that big pot, the biggest pile is ours?
Yeah, it's kind of gone.
So that's, there's still quite a bit there.
And then.
It's already come off of this gravel. We pushed a lot of material back onto there.
Does the gravel get better the deeper you go?
I'll guess with you.
Okay. The, the reason I ask that is because this, this one's owned by Parowan City.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying is they have five acres there that's also one mine.
I'm just wondering if you could mine shallower and let the water go deeper. I'm wondering if you could mine shallower and let the water be deeper.
It's just the moving of the overburden that's.
Is that what it is?
That's the problem, yeah.
But to answer your question, Paul, w- we're, we are workable. We're, we're not asking for, we just need to know before we move forward with this project that we have a landing place for that water. That is a future co- commission, whoever gets elected in November and whoever gets elected in two years and, and in two years, that we have an agreement that protects all of this investment we're about ready to put in. Um, and, and if, if there's a better site that is doable, where is it?
There's not.
That's the thing.
Have holes in the ground.
That's the thing. You gotta have a big hole in the ground. So, um, i- is there a way to figure it out that could, that doesn't, you know, put too much of a burden on, on, on Bruce? Um, what about the pit that's out on Old Highway ninety-one between halfway between?
It's just not very big. That's the one that he was talking about that we had that all crushed, but there's not really that much material, right?
Which pit?
What about the landfill site?
That the folks were so mad about. They thought it was gonna.
This pit.
Other thing that there's water, gotta be charging in Evans.
There is. In fact, Evans is, is overflowing right now.
Really?
Oh, really?
Water projects that are here that aren't being talked about, I guess, that are already in Parowan Valley. This isn't the first.
We're not doing near enough, though.
I get that. And then, you know, you're not gonna have it every year. How many times?
Right.
Yeah, it's only, it, it, tell me when, when the water come, I mean, is it always every year?
No, no.
We did, we had a lot of water in two thousand nineteen and then twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, we had hardly any.
So you didn't recharge?
It's gonna, it is, it's cyclic. I mean.
Gotta have these ready to go when you get it. That's the point. And so, but back to your point, Bruce, about gravel. Maybe we should be crushing. Can we crush in the winter time and move that out of the pit? So in the winter time, so that?
We're trying, that is.
Can we do that?
We were trying. That's what the guy was trying. But every time it snows, you can't have water in the crushers or floods.
Right.
Every time there's water.
So it's tough.
It's very tough. Well, and to get it up and out.
And the other problem is where are you gonna stack it? Say you crush ten thousand tons down there, then it, it hits that water. It's just gonna, you know what I mean? The pits are good underneath there, but the material that you stack up, it wouldn't be, there's really nowhere to stack it. Like I, like I said, you could, you could get conveyor belts and stack it on the five acres or the eighteen acres. It's just an, uh, an additional cost.
There's only, there's.
I'm not trying, I love water charge. I think I've probably done more, probably you and I have probably done more than anybody in, in this room for sure. I love it. I just want to understand there's an unintended expense.
Well, probably the minute the recharge is done, we probably oughta schedule crushing contracts and get it out of that hole. Right? I mean, because once, once, when are we done? I mean, June?
Anything in there either. We don't know how long that's gonna take.
So Dan?
There's never been a water recharge in there.
But that thing.
The flooding issue that we have where we'll just not take any of that floodwater. When it's hit, floodwater.
I'm not trying to.
Right. We just need to figure it out. But once, once that runoff's done, we need to start crushing gravel and get it out of there and stockpile it. We just need to figure it out. We need to sit down and create an MOU and, and, and.
And to Dan's point, I think whatever, whatever is worked out, I think you wanna have something with some kind of permanent so an easement that's written carefully, but that, but that really isn't gonna be subject to the whims of a future commission.
Yeah, I get that.
I mean, you, you can't, you can't, you can't obligate a future commission.
Like this is no longer pie in the sky.
Right.
We're actually ready to, 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 to start. We're not quite to moving yellow iron and pouring concrete, but we're to the point of spending money and in fact, we have money that's gonna be expiring at the end of twenty twenty-four that we've got, we, we can't wait any longer. We've gotta start moving it. But we have to know that we have a legal use of, of this pit if we're gonna design it and do it.
Yeah.
I just need to interject this. We talk about the cost, but the, the cost of our water rights because of this underground water management plan is insurmountable. There's only a limited amount of water and we have no choice and we have to do something.
Oh, you're preaching to the choir.
This is cha- I know, but this is beyond just crushing gravel. This is really a significant.
Right, it's.
There's another reason to, it isn't just diverting water so it doesn't make it out to the lake. It's getting credit for it so that we can get.
We need to figure out timings so the, the minute that, that.
Oh, I understand.
And that pit, the county pit, it never would hold water. It's like a toilet drain. I mean, it just goes, it, it would. It would never fill up with water, like you're saying by your house. It's amazing.
I, I.
So that water's gone within a week.
Yeah.
Anyway, and let's go in there and start, let's schedule crushing. So we go in and let's just time it so we can all make it work.
But to Bruce's point, I mean, is that, you know, worth a half a million dollars a year for the county to? I mean, that's another, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying to, 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 to have more employees moving more stuff and, and it's, it's, to Bruce's point, it, it's potentially more work, more fuel, more machine wear to, to do that.
To move it out of the pit?
Yeah.
Don't we always, don't we usually move it out of the pit anyway?
No, we never do.
Not here, not on, not, not on this pit.
Not in this pit.
But in Cedar we do, right?
We may, well, we did there, but until you get a big enough footprint, then you have to put it back in, right? And that's where.
Right. That's where we're at with this pit.
Cost and ease.
And if you'd build a dam across that, use half, you're cutting what you can recharge big time.
That's what I think. I don't, you don't wanna cut the recharge. I just, and I don't wanna not recharge. I'm just saying, there's a cost to this that I want everybody to understand. Cause when I'm getting held with a gun saying my road hasn't been gravelled.
Well, and, 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 and it is a problem that way because tho- that's the, that's the gravel that we use in Parowan Valley. And that's, you know, so if it's costing us twice as much to do it, maybe we don't, we can't do, we can only do half as much.
So is that out on the west bench feasible to try to develop more?
Well, it's so small. There's less than five acres there and we're down to the bottom. You could, it really comes down to the type of gravel, right? That stuff that we.
I'm sorry, Bruce, could you come up to the microphone? No, you're not.
I wish we had another option and we could just say, take it. I mean, I really wish we did.
Canyon.
Yeah.
We did that with the intent that that's not gonna be covered. It has enough clay and binder in it that it's gonna hold. But the stuff that comes out of this pit is really clean gravel that, I mean, it's, it's class A, we'll say. And the other stuff is class B. The stuff out of the red pit, he's talking on the west bench. It's just mostly dirt with, with some little bit of rocks in it, right? It's the sand that, if you did a sieve test on it, they would say the two hundreds are too high to get a spec mix. We could go there, yeah, but it, is it as good? No. And then instead of a road lasting ten years, it lasts five. Or when soon as it gets wet, I don't know how many calls.
Those slick.
How bad last winter was. And this gravel that we have out of this pit is the way we heal that up. That's what we did.
How much property is Parowan owning that area?
Five acres.
He's got it clicked on. It's this one here. It's eight acres.
Eight acres.
That blue one there.
And then, and is that to the?
Oh.
North.
That's to the north. And where's our eighteen?
Right here.
The east.
So what we might need to do in the MOU is say, Parowan, we need to be able to set up a conveyor and pile gravel on your property.
Right.
So that we can, how much more do they charge us, Bruce, to set up a couple more conveyors to get it out of the pit?
I don't know. I'll guess with you.
Maybe, and you know, maybe you, on the MOU, we can use your pit, your five acres to sto- stock our gravel on. And then we remove the overburden on the eighteen and start mining that. Then you can use that for a recharge. We just gotta figure it out.
Yeah, I get it.
You know, cause there's only so many holes in the ground and we have to recharge, period.
The, the price of it is, is, you know, you gotta have the recharge.
Right.
We get that.
But that clean gravel you're talking about kinda tells me that that's gonna percolate.
You hope. It will on the sides.
Well, and as long as you don't get the silt in there to seal it.
See them piles on the southwest end? That stuff we've hauled, that's, that's the cinders where we hauled them cinders, them red cinders.
From up the canyon?
Yeah, the southwest end or southeast end, I'm sorry. There's them piles. That's, I think that was probably some limbs that somebody hauled in there.
John, is there a house, is there a house underneath that description? What is right there?
No.
Who owns that property to the east of that? Who, who owns that piece right there?
This, the camps have just built a house out there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little dated.
Who owns that piece right there? The, where you air live?
White, Mark White.
Yeah, he passed.
Maybe we oughta look into, I mean, I'm sure proper.
Whatever. It was worth that. Eighteen acres was kinda thrown in when we were doing the fairgrounds. Exchange.
So, so I just said to Bruce, one of our challenges is, um, he isn't, he doesn't get to calendar the crusher. He has to hire it. And that should be something we, we really need is the county needs a, a crushing unit so he can schedule it to his timeframe, not to somebody else's.
I'm sorry. It's solved. You know, one thing compounds another.
You mean to buy our own crusher? What'd you, what are you saying?
Yeah.
We have been, it was on the thing for.
Yeah. For our.
I think it's important to point out, these, these things aren't mutually exclusive. It's not either or. Um, we can figure this out even with crushing, even with timing, with a little bit of planning. It's gonna be one year, you're gonna have a bunch of water. And if we've stockpiled the gravel somewhere else, then it, it's not, we're not in a bind. And then in a future year, then it's gonna be dry. I mean, you, I mean, this is southern Utah.
Not every year. It's not every year.
It's, it's, it is a total gamble. We may, we may get this whole thing put in and not be able to put any water in it for five years.
That's what happened in nineteen. We didn't have hardly any water after that.
Yeah, it'll be the pipe to nowhere. But when that water year comes and we can put all that water in the ground.
Have to be ready for it.
So, um, we're just, we're just, and, and you know what? To, to speak to that, that ground to the north, which is the city's and, I mean, th- this is a, a problem of, of what is the highest and best use and how do we prioritize it? We're married in these two sites, no matter what. Like, like Bruce mentioned, I mean, the city has a lot of involvement. We, we, we work, we wanna work with the county and, and not at cross purposes. And, and certainly we don't wanna say water comes more important than roads or anything, but can we figure it out? Um, we just need to figure it out and get an MOU, something that works so that we can move forward with this project. Cause this now becomes that picture I had the lynchpin. This is the, this is the, the holdup.
I would say, you know, I totally support, you know, that, you know, I support. And I, I know Maryland and Mike do too. I think, I'm not speaking out of turn.
Absolutely. I, and I, we just need to figure it out, like you said.
Sit down in a room and hash out an MOU to, that works for everybody.
Okay, let's put it on the calendar.
Yeah.
When? Oh.
Nope, we got somebody else coming in.
Yeah, sorry.
Incoming.
A little bit of, uh, ownership, but not as much as what you guys are talking about. Our Parowan Valley Pumpers Association, Jason Bradshaw.
Thank you.
And we do own the high water rights that come through the valley after the primary water is consumed by all of the ditch companies. And we are doing multiple projects. Um, we stand to lose, um, anywhere in the neighborhood of twelve to fifteen thousand acre feet of water in the Parowan Valley over the next, over the lifespan of our groundwater management plan. And we picket these one at a time, like you have done. And like the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District has done. And like Dan says, we, we are at this one. We have done some work in Little Creek, uh, with Dawn. We've done some work actually out on Fremont, up there. Summit, we're still playing around with that one a little bit. Uh, we are playing with options west of the freeway. As we know, that's a, that's a bottleneck to get floodwater out of Parowan. And we, we are proposing or getting ready to plan some items out there to use that water. We appreciate the coordination and we would definitely appreciate Iron County's support to letting us use this pit when, when we, when it's feasible for both. Spring water, springtime is, I think, when we're gonna have the most impact there. The monsonal events that come down in August are gonna be the ones that are gonna be problematic and hard to guess if there's a crusher there or if there's not.
That's the outlier.
Yeah, if they're just.
Well.
So that, that was one of our intentions there is to make that diversion structure, let that water pass through.
I'm talking about Alex's subdivision. If you put in those pipes, you're gonna have some auxiliary water going in there. Who, who knows when? It could be August, September, right?
Yeah, e- even the slightest.
Clean, but it could interfere with Bruce's operations, all I'm saying.
Yes. Once we hit into those fall months of September and October, um, we can pretty much push out monsonal events, hopefully irrigation, lawns are down. And that's when I think the county would be able to jump in there through those fall months. I hope it works out for their scheduling. Um, but I see the least amount of water being dumped in there in the fall of the year, the highest in the springs. And then we'll have to monitor those monsonal events.
I have to take a dozer and, and build a burn for the little bit of water you get, right? I mean, how much would monsonal water would you get in a pit from?
Well, the issue with mon-
Subdivision.
Take a dead hit to Parowan.
Right.
Anything up the canyon, big events that are gonna bring a bunch of mud through, we're just gonna let pass. It would have to be at the actual, you know,
Runoff.
Outburst on top of Parowan to get any street runoff.
Right.
Well, since we, we've had a few over the years in Parowan, but in reality, we've had one big one in all of our lives, right? The two months after the fire. And, and since then, the monsonal events have had some impact on Parowan, but nothing like that one did. Uh, so I appreciate the, the coordinated effort and anything we can get to secure that we have an option to go with this water. Definitely we can look at the Applegate pit later. That's just more pipe for us if he's willing and able to help us. Um, and I appreciate Parowan City's efforts to join their property adjacent to this one and make something work. So thank you.
Thank you. So do you need us, do we need to make a motion to start the MOU process?
Yeah.
Is that what you'd like?
Yes. Yep.
Can I, can I say one more thing? I wanna bring up the fairgrounds. Because it, it seems like it gets thrown back at that. I think it was a win-win situation for all of us, wasn't it? I know, and I get that. But, but it was a win-win. The fairgrounds look beautiful. We're gonna do other things there. We're gonna do some work on the, on the fair building. We're gonna build a new, um, barn. I know. And, and it's gonna benefit all of us and especially Parowan because they're the ones that use it. We've, we've maintained those historic events that you had, and I'm very proud of that because I, I think they're very important for Parowan. But, but I would just hope that that isn't brought up every time that we go to, you know? Because I, I think it's been a win-win for both of us. And, and it's, and it's turned out really well. Yeah. Yeah.
This is a good.
Anyway, I, I had to put my two, I have to put my two cents in, but anyway, um, the, go back to the map that has the pipe. I did wanna and that's Dan's presentation.
Yeah, I pulled it. Hang on.
I know you'd take it, wouldn't you?
Seriously.
So the, the pipe, the pipe is gonna come.
Right there.
Right there. So the pipe is gonna, eh, from, from the breakwater and it's gonna come all the way down.
Daylight about right here. Or.
Daylight, right there.
And it'll, it'll, it'll follow the side of the road. We'll put in a, a, a canal.
So the canal should.
Yes. This will be piped all the way to here.
I appreciate that you're gonna pipe it that far. I was afraid that it would come across here and it'd flood that
No.
east side of the fairgrounds. But, um, and so I. Yeah, there you go. Well.
No doubt.
Hopefully we can, but, but if you've got a thirty inch pipe, you should be able to build a canal that will take that.
Yeah.
And, and there shouldn't be a problem that way, right?
Yep.
Is that gonna be an issue with IMAC? Is there any access coming over that bike?
Yeah, I wonder about that too, the.
Um, so this, this is gonna be a, this is gonna be a bottleneck and area of focus for a lot of reasons as we talk moving forward as far as, uh.
And you're thinking a thirty-six inch?
Thirty to thirty-six, yeah.
Where will that canal go?
Well.
I mean, will it be on?
There's, there's, uh, we'll, we'll need to put, and, and I'm not sure, there's a, I don't know where the city owns road and where the county owns. There's a road there.
Is that?
It may just be prescriptive right away.
Boundary where that line?
It's your east boundary that there's a road that goes up there.
And you're talking H D P.
So it'll go down that road is what you're planning.
Yep.[1792.82]
Yeah.
Just on the very, very edge and um, regardless, we're going to want to see this put in pipe the entire way at some point as development happens. Um, my my priority would be to 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 have the Meisner subdivision participate because then.
Would be nice.
You're killing it, two birds with that stone, one, you're putting it in pipe the whole way and two, you're you're capturing his runoff as well.
Helps him tremendously.
Yeah.
He doesn't have to take a bunch of his land to build a detention base.
Exactly.
Can I ask you one more question, and this is kind of off subject? So when we put that um, barn in there, can you zoom in on?
You're talking, it's going to be in this area, right?
Oh, it's, it's way up, it's right.
Right here, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, no, sh- let let Bruce show you right.
Sure.
I don't think we've.
The building.
I don't think we. So it's got to be close enough because we're going to put restrooms in that, we've got to have more restrooms. Yeah, a long, a long ways and and we'll build up the barn, but um, we've got to have more restrooms and we've struggled with that at the fairgrounds. But we, we're thinking we're going to have to put in septic. Dan, is there any, there's no sewer right there.
So when, when the Meisner subdivision goes in, if he annexes and participates in the city, then then he'll have sewer. And that sewer will actually go down, in fact, we've got to talk about it because the plan is to bring it on that road that isn't a road, right on the edge of this, um, right on the north side of the, the south side of the gravel pit. Then he can tie into city sewer.
Glad to have a lift station?
No.
It'll grab.
No, 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 he'll have, he'll have a lift station at the bottom corner. And it will lift it about to three hundred east and then it'll gravity flow back into our system.
Thinking we can put a big enough septic.
If he doesn't annex.
In there.
It's up to you and him to decide how he's going to do it.
Because it's only during the fair that we have.
Probably have his own sewer treatment plant. But then where do you put the water from?
Yeah.
Those self-contained units.
While getting to pump it up to the gravel pit for recharge.
So, so just stay right there, John?
He'll put a lift station right here.
Right.
Hmm.
And he'll, he'll come just due west about right here at the gravel pit.
Oh.
Just, he, if he's willing, well, he's got to do something with his affluent, I mean, he'll, he.
He's still got to deal with the affluent, even if, even if he stays in the county, does he do lagoons? I mean.
Yeah, he's going to have to do something.
I doubt whether that's going to be very popular.
So this is one of the reasons why I think it's a win-win if he does annex. Um, I keep saying this, we're going to be impacted by the traffic, we're going to be impacted by the additional law enforcement fire and all that, the Parowan City is going to be. And and we won't have any additional property tax, we're going to have all that traffic, street problems. If we annex him and tie him into our sewer, then it's just a matter of putting in a lift station in a forced main, what, a mile? And then it's, you know.
You'll get the extra property tax?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, thinking about that, it might be better to do a little standalone sewer plant like they're looking at down in New Harmony. That way you can recapture that affluent and recharge it.
So we're, we're actually.
Might be a better solution, even if he.
We're planning on doing a recharge with the affluent of the entire system and Bryanhead.
Okay.
Which would capture this as well, we're looking at, we're looking.
Down lower.
Yeah.
Okay.
Down by what we're planning, what we're actually looking at doing, in fact, we're in the middle of hiring the engineer to do this, we have to redesign our our treatment plant.
Because of Bryanhead?
Um, not because of Bryanhead, actually, if Bryanhead wasn't even expanding, we would have to do it anyways. State of Utah is changing the rules on us with phosphorus and things like that, we have to put in a plant that'll, that'll clean up the water to a certain degree.
I do.
Because what we're discharging right now onto the Little Salt Lake is not um, going to be allowed anymore. So we're probably going to put in a hybrid system and we're, the site that we're looking at is actually the old sewer lagoons. Um, if we can clean the water up to type two there, then we can sell water or do a recharge project with any one of the farmers that are downhill from the old sewer lagoons. Now we're not, now we're not pumping it back up, yeah.
You can't put type two in a pivot.
Right, that's the idea, that's what we're talking about, and we're talking, right now, it's a half million gallons a day. Um, by the time that.
Downstream from that.
No, go to the old sewer lagoons.
Oh.
Now downstream is half the farms in the valley.
Yeah.
You just have to figure out what to do with it in the winter when they don't want it.
Well, we'll still tie it into the old sewer lagoon system. So, so when, when they're not taking it, then we, then we put it into this old sewer lagoons, in fact, we're probably going to expand and add a sewer again, this is all preliminary. But but that is, that's, the second lowest hanging fruit for us is all of that, all those millions of gallons of water right now that's just being put out on the Little Salt Lake. A lot of it gets evaporated, of course. Um, we only, we only discharge on the Little Salt Lake just once a year, but as, but as we grow, as Bryanhead grows, that's going to, it's going to probably in the next thirty years, triple the amount of water that comes. It will go from half a million gallons up to about one point five million gallons a day.
You could put it in those pivots.
If we could put it in the pivots and then.
Really great.
And then displace it, it would be just great. So, yeah, we're, we're looking at all those, all those options.
Well, I'm in favor of an MOU, but we have to have something that's fair, like Bruce says, it's going to cost the county money, we have to consider all the other residents of the county.
Yep.
As you know, Dan being the auditor. So it has to be fair so that we're not putting a huge burden on the other taxpayers in the county, but but make it a win-win for everybody.
Yep.
And I'm totally on board with that.
Yeah.
So.
And and I.
Let's schedule it, who needs to, who needs to be there?
Should we just put it on the next commission meeting?
Sam.
I think we need to have a work meeting.
It's going to be a sausage making meeting.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's going to take a long time.
Bruce.
Be a meet, yeah.
One of the commissioners, Rich, Jason.
Sam.
Happy to be involved.
Sam, you got to have an attorney there. Couple of people from the city.
I, I can be involved.
Okay. If I send out a link for a week from now, two weeks from now, we'll just do one of the, I'll do one of those things that everybody can, I can say this time, this time, this time, you can vote, we'll do that. A doodle, we'll do a doodle.
Love a doodle.
I'm going to say it.
I never respond at all.
We need a.
Make it work.
John, do we need a motion to do that?
I don't think you're taking any.
We're not really taking an action.
I mean, you could.
We need to wait until we get something concrete.
So, do we want to just make a motion to do an MOU or or we just do it and then we bring it back?
Yeah, let's just.
That's what I would suggest.
We're going to keep moving forward on design.
Is that true, do we?
Um, and and it sounds like one of the concerns I had when building the agenda and I just didn't get a chance to talk to Dan was whether or not we wanted to convey title and it sounds like we definitely don't want to do that.
My, and my, by the way, my only thought with that was i- if, if, if and when the pit is completely played out, if that day ever comes, at that point, the county would would probably rather not have the liability of having standing water in there, if there's no other point, but it sounds like there is a point to con- to continue it.
Well, the other question is liability, I mean, if you have somebody go down there drowning that, I mean, are we, are we?
It's on our property.
Skinny dipping in there and they die, yeah.
So we ought to look at a co-liability or a.
Western pits remote enough, most people don't even know it's there.
And nobody.
That's in the middle of town.
This is fenced, this is fenced and we can put up good signage and things like that.
It is fenced now.
Yep.
The whole thing's fenced, okay.
I mean, that fence would keep out a teenage, couple teenage boys about as good as a egg carton would.
Challenge accepted.
So anyways, but it, but it, but it, those are the considerations, I.
So maybe.
That's the only reason I've said conveyance.
If 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 Parowan owns it and they're as part of the MOU that we get to use it while they, while they, you know, recharge in their own property, that's, but as long as we're not.
I think that's questions that we need to talk to Sam about.
And those are all things that could be worked through, so.
I think we've identified the the key points and we can figure it out one way or the other, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Councilman. All right, where are we at? Um, let's see. Okay, we're in number five. Discussion and possible approval of tax forgiveness due to indigence and failure to apply for abatement. APNB dash forty-five dash seventy-six.
Okay. All right, so.
Think I should bring lunch because it was going to be so short.
I I put that the meeting would end at eleven thirty.
Thanks, guys, yep.
You.
Yep.
I'm about ready to ask for a recess. Okay. So, um, this, this is an individual, uh, that came to Cherisha Lister, uh, in the auditor's office. And they were, they were sick and in the hospital when it was time to apply for their, um, oh, let's see, is she here? Do you remember what kind of abatement it was, Luke?
Circuit breaker.
It was a circuit breaker.
Circuit breaker.
And it was, but it was a full abatement, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, now that, now it's a forgiveness, right?
Well, because, because we're past the date and the application was never made in time because of the, uh, there was a fall and a, and broken bones and then in the hospital, the the person.
Missed all those.
Person didn't, yeah.
Dates.
Yeah, and so.
There she is.
Oh, there she is, she was watching. Um, and I, I, I would rather not, you know, say the person's name, but but basically, they were, they were incapacitated during the time to apply, which means at this point, either they can be rejected for, for their abatement because it's just not, veterans are the only ones that can be done, you know, too late. Or the only other um, relief is to actually come before the commission and request for forgiveness, and that's why it's worded that way. So this was essentially a missed application for an ongoing circuit breaker, is that correct? And basically, they've already applied, I think, for this next year, or they're in the process. Yeah, and it was just one of those deals where the person fell and broke their wrist and was, well, no, he was.
Oh, yeah.
Injured and and then, you know, he, yeah, he didn't get it done.
I think he got infection and then it got, went worse.
And and I'd like to just point out, we don't normally.
Have we done this before?
It's, it's, it's something we do.
Occasional.
And what I was going to say was rarely is what we try to do because it's, we don't want to.
Set a precedent.
Right. And and so this is a, this is pretty much the bar, this or like I was in the hospital for, with cancer for months or something like that, that we would um, actually even bring it to the commission, uh, normally, I mean, if they insist, we will, but usually, we try to, you know, keep these kind of situations to just, you know, genuine emergencies that happened. So, I, based on what I've seen, I would, I would, I would recommend that maybe this, in this case where it was an ongoing one, there was some pretty serious health things and they're actually going to get um, applied this year and and likely receive uh, the ongoing abatement, that I would recommend that uh, the commission.
I forgot, what is the mail?
It is.
Didn't have that on there either.
And it occurs to me, I haven't switched my.
I know, I haven't.
Thing back. It is, is this right, Cherisha, the fifteen ninety-five twenty-four? So one thousand five ninety-five and twenty-four cents.
And that's significant when you're only on social security.
Yeah, I mean, less than.
Wasn't it?
Barely twenty, uh, twenty-one thousand, and that's all social security, and then I did want to state that it would be uh, for account number four-three-one-six-three. That's the assessor's parcel number, one, four-three-one-six-three.
Any discussion on that? Paul?
No. Entertain a motion, I suppose, is there any other discussion that we need to make or?
No, I'll make a motion uh, for, to approve the tax forgiveness due to indigent and failure to apply for abatement for a thousand five hundred ninety-five point two-four and it's uh, APN four-three-one-six-three, that's different than in the.
Is it, let me double check.
Yeah, it's different than in the.
Parcel number, the, the, on this statement is B dash zero-zero-four-five dash zero-zero-seventy-six.
Is it that one?
Because it is the same one, it's, it's because there's, we have a two-numbered system, one is a letter, one's a number.
Oh.
I just gave you the number, but if you want to do the B, do the B number.
Uh, APNB dash four-five dash seven-six. Okay.
I'll second that, it's been moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. We'll go to personnel.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, in the Parks and Recreation Department, Peyton McCabe was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the newly approved full-time custodial maintenance worker position effective February twenty-fourth, or sorry, February twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, the next three items are in the Sheriff's Office Corrections side. Joshua Kill was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant full-time deputy position effective February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Erin Guzman was selected from the most recent um, competitive recruiting and interview process to back, backfill the vacant full-time secretary position effective February fifth, twenty-twenty-four. And Dave Avila has passed the required testing to receive bilingual pay effective February fifth, twenty-twenty-four. Next four items are in the Sheriff's Office Patrol side, Tyrell Crofts was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant full-time deputy or detective deputy effective February twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. Nathaniel Martinez was selected from, um, as a part-time reserve deputy, which is a fill from a continuous recruitment, effective February twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. Um, after an internal recruitment, Ethan Bussie and Avery Shumway have been um, elected to transfer from a full-time corrections deputies um, to full-time patrol deputies effective February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. In the Road Department, Hayes Impettit has completed all skills and requirements to receive a promotion from a technician two to an equipment operator effective February fourth, twenty-twenty-four. In the Weed Department, Amber Hatch was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the newly approved full-time weed supervisor position effective February fifth, twenty-twenty-four. And then in the Natural Resource slash Fleet Department, Kathy Chatwin was, was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the newly approved part-time administrative assistant position effective February fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
Any questions on that?
Think so.
Okay, entertain a motion.
We're glad, we're, we're happy to have the um, weed supervisor in place.
Yes.
Took us a little while to get through that, anyway. And she's doing really, really good, I got a report this morning. Um, so uh, I would approve a- all of uh, from A to F that Jennifer has explained.
I'll second that, it's been moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
No boards, no.
I didn't have anything.
You didn't have anything?
Nope.
Think so either.
No, 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 non-delegated?